Clear Liverpool City Council meeting for the 16th of October 2024 officially open. And this being the first meeting of this term of council, I'd like to welcome everybody here, and particularly our newly elected and returning councillors. Just to remind everyone that in accordance with clause 5.34 of the Code of Meeting Practice, that the meeting is being recorded and being made publicly available on the council's website, and persons attending the meeting should refrain from making any defamatory statements. To start off today's proceedings, I would like to invite Pastor Cardio Alesi from the Living Grace Christian Church to read the acknowledgement of the country and for the prayer of council and affirmation, followed by the National Anthem, which he can sing or sing, that's up to you if you want to sing the National anthem. Thank you. Could I invite everyone to please stand?
Thank you. Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors past and present, the Karabogu clan of the Darug nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Darawal and Darug nations. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the wellbeing of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Today, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Yeah, Father God, we just thank you for this first meeting. We thank you for the election of Mayor Ned Moon and the new councillors. We pray for unity. We do pray for those sound decision-makings. We pray for great strategy, great insight, great vision. We hope that we would see through your lens that we would be a people who would love diversity, love our neighbours, be a beacon of hope and inspiration to other councils in the area. We thank you for the progress and future of Liverpool. We thank you for all that you are doing. We acknowledge you this day, and we commit all things to you. We pray for truth above all else. We pray that there's a way of moving forward that you'd determine and set in all our hearts to be united and one accord for all the right reasons. So we thank you for it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. And thank you very much, Pastor, for your kind words and your sincere and warm prayers for us. We greatly, greatly appreciate it. I'll hand over to the CEO.
Thank you. Through the chair, under section 233A of the Local Government Act 1993, the mayor and councillors are required to take an oath or make an affirmation of office. Oaths or affirmation of office must be taken or made by each councillor at or before the first meeting of council after being elected. For the purposes of these meetings, I can advise that the mayor and all councillors took the oath or affirmation of office at a ceremony held on the 11th of October 2024.
Thank you. We have no councillors attending remotely. We have no apologies, no condolences. The next item is the confirmation of the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on the 28th of August 2024.
Have you moved them?
Councillor McNair, second councillor, Moon. Any discussion? All those in favour, against? I declare that carried. Are there any declarations of interest?
I'll declare one interest on confidential O2. Confidential O2, non-procurnary, less than significant. If I can just have one of the forms, please. Non-procurnary, less than significant. The nature is my children go to school on that street and are very near that property, and previously I've worked in real estate within that area. And whilst non-procurnary is significant, I will be leaving the chamber.
Any other declarations? Well, now move into the public forum. Today, we have... Today. The first one is celebrating Liverpool council's success. It's with great pride that I congratulate the staff of Liverpool council for the two significant achievements that truly reflect our city's commitment to excellence. I'm currently proud to announce that our Yalomandi Liverpool library has earned global recognition, selected as one of the top four libraries in the world by the International Federation of Library Associations and Institutions at their 2024 conference in Barcelona. This prestigious honour reflects the dedication and innovation of our library staff, who have worked tirelessly to make our library a hub of learning, community engagement and inclusivity. This international acknowledgement is a testament to the high standards of service and creativity that make Liverpool a leader on the global stage. In addition to this incredible achievement, I want to extend my congratulations to the teams behind our council project, which received recognition at the 2024 Keep Australia Beautiful Sustainable Cities Awards. The Croc mattress shredder won the circular economy award, showcasing our city's leadership in sustainable waste management and our commitment to creating a more circular economy. The Croc was also a finalist in the resource recovery category, further emphasising the innovative work being done to address the waste challenges in Liverpool. Secondly, Liverpool Pioneer's Memorial Park was highly commended in the heritage and cultural category, recognising our efforts to preserve and celebrate the rich history of Liverpool. This commendation is a reflection of the dedication our staff have shown in ensuring the memorial park continues to be a place of significance for our community, whilst also honouring our past. These achievements are a reflection of the passion, creativity and commitment of our council staff, and can I say, current and previous council staff who have worked on this. And I send my heartfelt congratulations to everyone involved. Together, we're making Liverpool a leader in sustainability, heritage preservation and a global excellence. Let us continue to build on these successes, ensuring our community remains a beacon of innovation, culture and progress for years to come. I'll formally move that way. Councillor Green?
Yes, can I ask a question? Have the staff been, that were involved in these award-winning categories, have they received either a written way of congratulating or a certificate or something, you know, that's tangible?
I refer to the CEO, but we can happily add on as part of this that we write to them as council and do that. So if we can just add that, so the motion was, sorry, that this matter will be noted and recommendations be adopted, and two, that we write to the relevant staff congratulating them. And are you envisaging like a nice certificate or something more than just a letter?
A letter would be fine, as long as it's a personal congratulations in recognition of, you know, achievement and passion and dedication.
Yep, wonderful.
With a piece of flour.
Yes, that will be done, notwithstanding on the Pioneer's Park and the shredder, all the staff are actually invited to the actual ceremony as well, councillors, that was good. And of course, Ms Bono and Elise went to Barcelona for the other one, so, but we'll get those letters out.
Councillor AJ, you saying something? Oh, you said, oh, and flowers, was it? And flowers. Any other discussion? No, okay. I'll put it, all those in favour, against, declare it unanimous. The next mayoral minute, if I can just scroll down on the screen, please, when you get a chance. Reflection on local elections and future priorities for Liverpool. As we start a new term, I wish to extend my heartfelt congratulations to the newly appointed councillors. You have earned the trust of our residents, and I have know about that your passion, vision and dedication will serve our community well, and I look forward to working closely with each one of you as we move forward into a new term filled with both opportunities and challenges. At the same time, I want to take this moment to thank and farewell those councillors who are not continuing with us. Your contributions have helped shape the progress we've made so far, and your commitment to the city of Liverpool will leave a lasting impact. On behalf of the entire community, I extend our deepest gratitude for your service. The recent election period has provided an invaluable opportunity for both the mayor and the councillors to reconnect with the people we represent, engaging with our residents across Liverpool. We're able to hear directly from them about their hopes, concerns and priorities for the future of our city. It is clear that our community is passionate about a range of important issues, including infrastructure, safety and sustainable development. Based on these priorities, I am requesting for the following reports to be provided to council by the December council meeting, if possible. Number one, a report on the installation of lights and CCTV in residential streets in the CBD. Two, a report on reinstating council's prior neighbourhood zones model, which broke up the LGA into nine zones for a more effective provision of services by area, including a timeline for implementation. Three, a report on street sweeping, including the frequency and recommendations on how it can be improved. Four, a report on how to expedite, expedite, sorry, the upgrade of Edmondson Avenue and Fourth Avenue in Austro, including a traffic study to understand road capacity of roads in that area. Five, a report on how to expedite the delivery of parks in Austro and Edmondson Park. Six, the creation of an Edmondson Parks resident advisory group to oversee the delivery of the long overdue parks in the area. Seven, a report on the progress of current VPAs being negotiated, including expected completion dates. Eight, a report on the amount of contribution funds collected in each area and having those funds available to be used by council for infrastructure projects in those areas. Nine, a report on potential temporary sites for parking through the CBD, including sites under private ownership. These reports are to include Gantt charts showing relevant milestones and expected completion dates. These reports will form the foundation of our efforts as we continue to shape Liverpool's future, ensuring that we address the needs and aspirations of our residents. Thank you all once again for your trust and support. Together, we'll continue to build, building a city that we're all proud to call home. And sorry, if we add a point 10, did you, sorry, Councillor Green?
Could I please? I guess from my perspective, I'd really like to see the 2168 area also included, a report of the needs of 2168 that includes hard and social infrastructure and that draws on other reports of the socio-demographic reports of the area to incorporate that.
Okay, so...
That would give council a really broad understanding of both the hard, the physical needs of infrastructure, but also the social.
Yep, so if we can, if we can just add to it, so... It would be a point...
Point 10?
A point 10. Yeah, so the mayoral minute can't be amended, so I'm happy to incorporate that as a point 10, after Councillor Green's recommendation. A report outlining the needs of the 2168 area, including hard and social.
Hard and social infrastructure.
Hard and social infrastructure, all right.
To draw on other reports that council has on socio-demographic information.
Can we say it? Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, if I can... Are you happy with how it's written?
Yes.
I was mindful of keeping it short and sweet, so to help them type. Yeah. All right, great. There's one more?
Can I, just one more? In recognising that this is a new council and starting off on a new term, I guess, you know, I was wondering if we may be able to have a respectful practices workshop in terms of, you know, how we work together and for successful collaboration and cooperation, it also incorporates a framework of respectful practices so that, you know, we can get, you know, we know not only just how to approach things, but there's also, that also is then a commitment to respectful practice and also, I guess, an opportunity to hold each other to account when that doesn't occur. But at least, you know, if we want to be successful in cooperating and working collaboratively together, I would ask that we would look at a respectful workshop.
So if we were to say team building and cooperative...
Team building that incorporates a respectful practices workshop?
Yes. And I know we have to do a professional development plan for councillors, so it would be good if we receive, you know, get that calendar... And I think that's a separate discussion we all could have offline of what we'd like to see into that programme, but I think it's very important. And I just think for the new councillors who are here, yeah, it's good that we, we all know what's going. We all have busy lives and we all plan forward of what we want to, what to expect. So let's see.
I've just got a question, if that's possible, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, can you just give me one moment, just so I can make sure we get the point 11 right?
Yep, that's fine.
The council day building workshop, as part of their professional development... Yeah, I think we can, happy with that. Yeah, Councillor Monahan?
Point eight, it's, which reads a report on the amount of contribution funds collected in each area. What does that mean exactly, each area?
Yep, so council has approximately $280 million in 711 contributions, that's sitting there. Each, and that's all collected according to a plan for an area. So we have the Austro plan, which has approximately $70, $80 million for Austro. You have an existing area plan, there's a, and there's a whole, so there's basically like, I couldn't quote exactly, but there's probably eight to 10 different plans, give or take. So, and that money has to be spent in those areas only.
So these are geographic areas?
Yes.
And that comprises the entire local government area?
Yes, yep, yeah. So your existing area ones is sort of your, from East Liverpool out to probably Kasulo Lernia. I think it kind of, it kind of stops the boundary there. Then there's like, then there's a CBD one, has its own plan, and it just goes into groups of suburbs, probably, you could say.
Thank you.
Yeah, and can I say, and there's, this, there's going to be a lot of work on that one, because there's a, the things you've, when you do the subdivision originally, we have to outline what we're collecting the money for, and the money has to be spent on those sort of things. So that's, that's what this is starting to identify in there.
And are those reports not already collected?
There is a, an amount of information, and I guess for our, for our purposes, if you look at it, my personal view on, on it is ultimately we have collected funds to deliver a product, and that money hasn't been delivered. So I'm of the view that, that balance is way too high. I see it more of a liability because we need to deliver the infrastructure. It's one thing having the money there, but the money's there for a park, so we should build a park. So, and then what happens though is things do become dated. There are some, there is some flexibility, priorities change. So I think that's what that's trying to, trying to establish. So what the goal I'd like to see from this is, okay, we've got this money, okay, well, let's now incorporate it for next year's budget or the following year's budget, to at least start designing and constructing. That's the hopefully objective.
Mr Mayor?
Yes, Councillor Moon?
If I could just add to point 10, if possible, to write to the local state member regarding the issues we've got with housing in 2168, the status of housing in 2168. Because that's part of, that's part of what we're saying there, is that right?
Well, can, can I recommend, before we get into the writing, I, and I know you've put the motion previously about upgrading housing in the area, that we maybe leave the red, let's get, let's get the reports back before we get down to writing letters and stuff about it. Yeah, and they are, because I think part of one of the things is a bit of a stocktake of what motions that are, where we are in train. I think that's getting all the other councillors up to speed with all that sort of stuff.
Yep.
All right, is any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, again, declare unanimous. Okay, thank you, councillors. We're now moving to...
Can I move a urgency motion before we get into the agenda?
Yes, councillor, what is your urgency motion?
Don't worry, it's nothing serious.
If it's...
Basically, it's urgent because it's about an event that falls before the next council meeting, and it's involving an artist who's performing in Liverpool from the Bosnian community. In Australia, they're the, Liverpool's a home to the largest Bosnian community. They call Liverpool Little Sarajevo, as you can imagine. So our city is privileged to host a concert for a gentleman by the name of Enos Begovic, who sold nearly a million albums. His concerts fill up stadiums the size of Allianz Stadium. It's important that we have a person of international fame when they do business in Liverpool, in our city, that they get acknowledged. It brings a benefit for the city. They become an international ambassador for the, for the city as, in the media. It's pretty much on there. I don't know if I can see it, but if we can bring it up. It's just a motion to hold a civic, a small civic reception. Councillors and staff give him a token of thank you for choosing Liverpool as your city to hold your concert. It's going to get a lot of recognition in the, in the media, where we give him something symbolic like the keys to the city. So that's pretty much the motion, but not really urgent, but there was no other way to put it into the agenda.
Yeah, just be careful, councillor, it's, arguing against yourself, saying it's not urgent doesn't help me in deliberating that it's urgent. The, just, can we just go back up, just so I can have a read of it? Yeah. So on the issue of urgency, it's about this person only being here for the next couple of weeks in between council meetings, and that he's an international, so on and so forth. And the objective, what you like to hope, is holding a civic reception for him whilst he's here. That's, that's the urgency. Okay, I get, I can understand and empathise with that. If we can scroll down just a little bit. The only thing that I have an issue with, and I would ask that you remove it, because I don't see it, is that I'm happy to give him a recognition of some sort, but not the keys to the city, because that's a pretty big, massive honour and can't give it to anyone else, but happy to give, obviously, show the respect to, obviously, one of our guests. So if you're happy to remove the keys to the city and those words, then I'm happy with that. All right. Yeah. And I think if I can just say to all councillors, if anyone has any, if there's things like this in the future, please let me know, because I think we should, it's, we can, it's good to be able to do, to show respect for our local community. So all right, on that basis, I'm happy to accept it as, as urgent. Do you have a second for the motion?
I'm happy to second with a question.
Yes, Councillor McNair?
I'm, I'm happy to second, and then I'll ask a question. And, and it's just that this has come to us now. I just want to ask that, the, because it's quite prescriptive, the function space is available on that day? Okay, good. I just want to double check that, because it's quite prescriptive, that's all.
Can I ask the Councillor McNair the questions through the chair, please?
Sorry, through the chair, sir, sorry.
I don't have to be sir, no, no, not sir, don't worry.
Through the chair. Can I check if, yeah, and again, and also, just, you know, whether or not that budget is, is enough, and I'm just checking through the chair.
Yeah, and actually, you need to amend it, Councillor Sevsky, to identify a funding source. Did you do that? Sorry, it's not in front of me. Looking from the civic event, okay. Yep, all right. So rule it's urgent, you've got a second. Did you want to speak for your motion? Sorry, can you just put your microphone on, please?
I pretty much did speak for it, so I'm happy for it, too.
All right, any further discussion? No, okay, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it unanimous. Now we'll move on to the election of deputy mayor, COM 01, page 53, tab 1, with the recommendation on page 53. My understanding is that we've received one nomination, one nomination only? Or as in one person's been nominated?
Correct, was one nomination.
Great, so councillor Harrell has been nominated and therefore has accepted the nomination. Good luck. We're going to vote. Yeah, well, I guess councillor Harrell is elected deputy mayor by acclamation. Thank you, so if you can, for the year, for the, just sorry, we actually need to move her in a second. Well, I'll use councillor McNair and councillor, councillor Green. All right, the movers and seconders of it, all right, great, thank you. I think excuse us for a moment, I'm going to have to robe the deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, thank you fellow councillors, it, it is indeed an honour to represent council as the deputy mayor, I, I am grateful for your support, it's, it's a pleasure to know that you are all in support of me representing you as deputy mayor, I hope I do my job, I've been sitting at the other side of this for about sixteen years now, I did this once in two thousand and eight, and it was a pleasure to do it then, I hope I can live up to the expectations this time, so thank you very much, it's a pleasure, thank you.
Councillor Carnib.
We're on, we're on, through the chair, first of all, I'd like to congratulate councillor Harrell on his election as deputy mayor, I think, I, I wasn't aware councillor Harrell had only been declared an elected deputy mayor once in two thousand and eight, so I think it's a great honour to hold such a role on such a prestigious council, but also to recognise the tonnes of work that Mr Harrell and councillor Harrell, sorry, now deputy mayor Harrell, has put into the city of Liverpool over the last sixteen years, I think it's a testament to his experience, his devotion, I think if we're lucky enough to sit on council for a decade and a half and accomplish what he has for this council, it would be an outstanding achievement, it's also important to acknowledge his wife, Janice, who's here today, no doubt she's. No doubt, Janice is extraordinarily happy for deputy mayor Harrell, and as should be the case, like I said earlier, and I'll reiterate, it's important to recognise what he's done over the last decade and a half, and congratulations against deputy mayor Harrell.
Yes, and I should say to you councillor Carnib, thank you for continuing on the Carnib tradition of Liverpool council, which was from ninety six, or when did your father start on council?
I believe it was ninety six, look, I didn't want to make it about my father, when the initial mayoral minute went up, but now that you've brought it up, I think, it's also important to acknowledge that my dad devoted a significant portion of three decades to public office, to serving the, the people of Liverpool, vivid memory of mine, when I was a very young kid, dad taking me to school, he would often see issues, potholes, other issues, constituents calling him, and he would note it down, and I remember from that early stage that dad put a lot of time and effort into representing the people of Liverpool, so I think it's, it's important to not only congratulate my father, who's, who's served a significant period of time on this council, but also our going councillors like councillor Haddid and other councillors, so it's important to do that, thanks for raising that, Mr Mayor.
Councillor McNaul.
Thank you, I just wanted to offer my heartfelt congratulations to my friend councillor Harrell and the, you know, such a long term civic leader for our city, congratulations, I'm so pleased that you're taking on this role of representation for all of us and the support for the mayor, I'm humbled to have had that honour for the last twelve months, and I know that you will give this your everything, because you've got so much to give, so thank you very much and congratulations.
And on that note, I can say councillor, you have big shoes to fill, and I thank you very much councillor McNaul for your amazing support over the last twelve months as deputy mayor, I couldn't have asked for anything better, and you've been amazing in guidance wisdom, all right, and laughing on my bad joke, on my, on my bad jokes, so thank you very much, you made me feel good, which is great, but you did an amazing job, so thank you. Councillor Hart.
Thanks Mayor, I just want to congratulate you as well councillor Harrell on your election, I know you attract a lot of respect from all the councils here, and I'm pretty sure a vast majority of this room at the moment, and just from the youngest councillor to the oldest councillor here at the moment, I wish you well with your tenure as deputy mayor.
Councillor AJ.
Well, while everybody's speaking, Peter, you deserve it, God bless you.
All right, now any further discussion? Thank you everyone, we'll now move on to com zero two, appointment of councillors to committees and affiliated bodies, page fifty seven, tab two with the recommendation on page fifty eight. Let's see, to do this, we will go. So I think we'll just go through one by one, each committee, and we will, if need be, then we can, if there's any issues, we can either vote on it or hopefully come to a, a resolution together, so I'll start off in order Aboriginal Consultative Committee, councillor Green.
Yes, please, I'd like to convene that place.
Any other nominate, anyone else want to be on it? Actually, I say for the outset, and I'm, and I'm sorry new councillors if I say things that you already know, but yeah, so any councillor can attend a committee if they want to attend, and any resolution from the committee comes back to council regardless, but ideally, the discussion happens at the committee where a lot of people spend time on an issue, rather than come to the council and be discussed all over again.
Can we add another councillor on there?
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind sitting on there.
Yep, councillor Rusevsky.
Two councillors instead of one?
Yeah, that's fine, and councillor, you're happy to chair it, so I think you just have to highlight that councillor Green as a chair. Anyone else? Nope, okay, let's go to the next one, Audit and Risk Committee.
I think, sorry, through the chair, we need to determine whether or not we put a non-voting council member on to there, I'm happy to, to move that we do put a non-voting council member on to the Eric if someone's prepared to do it.
Yeah, I think, look, whilst I exactly how it's written in the book, if we go one by one, and then the final motion can cover everything, but yes, I'm happy to be guarded by everyone. Anybody want to go on Eric?
Can I nominate councillor Carnib?
Yes, I'll, I'll accept, I'll accept the nomination through the chair, and I'll also nominate councillor Rusevsky.
Yep. I'm assuming you're happy with that councillor Rusevsky?
Yep.
Anyone else? Yep, and once again, as I said, it's open to everybody, all right. Uh, hold on, why is your order different than my order? Was that an order? Are you just going down? That was the second one? All right, okay, because I'm just going, okay, then I'll, I'll, I'll go off your screen then, than rather mine, that's different, so. Uh, can you just go up a little bit, please? Civic Advisory Committee. All councillors already on that? Yep, that's fine. Companion Animal Committee.
Mr Mayor, can I, can I suggest that after we go through all of the committees, that we might have a discussion at the end about, about committees in general?
Yes, all right, so if there's no one, we'll keep that vacant for the moment. Community Safety and Crime Prevention Advisory Committee.
I'd like to nominate councillor Green.
Yep, councillor Green. Anyone else? Great, Environmental Advisory Committee, councillor Harrell. Councillor Carnib. Councillor Hart. Anyone else? Uh, next, please. Governance, that's all councillors. Heritage, heritage. Sorry, microphone please, sorry councillors, can I just ask, so the way the mics work, only two at a time, and it's.
No, through the chair, excuse me, Mr Mayor, that's, that's my apologies to getting used to this machinery, technologically, very advanced.
No one got used, no, no one got used to it last term, so you don't have to apologise.
I've got to make sure I switch it off.
Yeah, so, sorry, yeah, heritage? Microphone please.
I'd like to nominate councillor Harrell.
Councillor Harrell, anyone else? Councillor Hart? Okay, Intermodal, oh, sorry, anyone else for heritage? Intermodal?
Sorry, I got in through the chair, I got in through you councillor, sorry McNaul, finally, it's, I'm, I'm using it appropriately now, Mr Mayor, I'll nominate councillor Rusevsky for the Intermodal Committee.
Yep, taking as a yes, and councillor McNaul? Yep. Joining on as well, councillor AJ? All right, Access Committee.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate for that committee, thanks.
Yep, councillor Monahan. Anyone else? Nope. Okay, Sports Committee.
Whether I'm nominating, I'll put my hand up for this one.
Yep, councillor Carnib and councillor Ibrahim. Councillor Rusevsky and councillor McNaul.
Yeah, I would like to put my name down too.
Councillor AJ? No, five, now you can play basketball. Tourism and CBD, oh, councillor Green, McNaul, Ibrahim and Carnib? And Rusevsky? Yep, yep, next. Youth Council, councillor McNaul, councillor Carnib, we should take this opportunity to welcome former youth councillor councillor AJ, going back to the youth, to the youth council, so doesn't know councillor AJ was part of the youth council, I think it was the first one back in nineteen.
Nineteen ninety nine.
Nineteen ninety nine.
Some of them were very young.
Yes. Sorry.
I also nominate councillor Monahan.
Councillor Monahan, yep. Civic Risk. It meets all over the area, like it's very, I would have liked to know about it, yeah, it meets very far and wide. Anyone? Keep it empty for the moment? All right. Next. George's River Combined Councillures' Committee, councillor Harrell, councillor McNaul. Anyone else? Oh, it's two councillors, these, are these our, oh no, they're going from internal to external, okay. The Pedestrian Active Transport and Traffic Committee. Councillor Amun.
Can I nominate councillor Harrell? Sorry, deputy mayor.
Just, just a point, Mr Mayor, with that traffic committee, could I suggest that instead of a councillor chairing the meeting, because that's an external committee, and it, it really ought to be, in my humble opinion, chaired by council's technical representative. There are decisions to be made that councillors don't have expertise in, and I would suggest that it, based on my experience, I've been on, on those for the last fifteen, sixteen years, and I would think that the council staff would make a better representative, a chair than, than I would, and I know a little bit about traffic, so that's just my suggestion.
Without knowing the charter being, uh, it's, yes, and having been on them, I, I understand your point and empathise with you, we could probably just add that, recommended that a staff member chair the meeting.
Can I, can I suggest through the chair that this is one of the things that we can bring up in the broader discussion once we've done all of these allocations?
Yep, so, all right. Sorry. Yeah, one second. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, going back to that one, I believe that the name of that committee has changed too, we dropped the Liverpool Pedestrian Active Transport and just simply called it the Traffic Committee, it's a mouthful the way it is.
Yes, okay, please. Fantastic, LTC, how good's that? Uh, next, please, Macarthur Bushfire Management Committee.
I've been the member of that for quite some time, I'm happy to take it on if nobody else wants it.
Yep, councillor Harrell. New South Wales Public Libraries Association. Anyone going to represent the top four library in the world?
I'd, I'd like to nominate for that committee.
Okay, great, Ethan? Or councillor Monahan? All right. Next, South West Sydney Planning Panel, I'd like to nominate myself, it's an external committee. Anyone else?
And myself, I'd like to go on there.
Councillor Rusevsky, councillor Amun.
Do we need to nominate alternatives, as, alternatives as well?
Yeah, did the report say four alternates? Let me, it said four? Okay, cool. So we need three others for this, councillor AJ? Anyone?
I'm happy to go as the alternate.
Councillor Carnib. Councillor Harrell. Yep. Yeah, so, that's four, is that one, two, then one, two, three, four, yeah, there's six, six names there. So I'll be myself and councillor Rusevsky as the two, and then there'll be the four alternates. Um, South West, one of you guys ready? Councillor AJ, can you turn off your mic, please?
Yes, thank you, through the chair, I'd nominate myself for this committee.
Councillor Carnib?
Yes.
I'm happy to go as an alternate if you can't make it on various meetings.
Councillor Rusevsky is an alternate. Wesrock?
I'd like to nominate councillor Monahan.
Councillor Monahan, councillor McNaul. Next one? Next one, sorry. Alternates, oh, sorry, alternates, my apologies, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate councillor Carnib and councillor Rostewski as the alternates.
Next. Oh, that's it? Wonderful. All right. I'm moving that way, no?
Yes, with, with a couple of additional points, um, with the indulgence of council, I'd like to add to the end, and thank you, everybody, for, um, volunteering for the committees. We did a lot of work last year and, um, talking about, you know, committee work and the efficiency of committees, and, and I thank the staff for that. What I would, and at risk of repeating, but let's draw on what we've already done. Um, non-urgently, let's say in the next six months, I would really like to see, um, a review of the committee charters and structures, the internal ones, obviously, we don't look at the external ones. Uh, just to make sure that they are meeting the obligations and that those, also that those, um, ambitions of that committee haven't changed over time, and I would suggest that quite a lot of them have. Um, so, to keep on going with what we have for the moment, but I would really, and I'd love councillors to be involved in that discussion early on, so that we can make sure we're getting the best value for staff time and for, for community time, for those community representatives on those committees as well. Um, and, and potentially, you know, looking at whether, you know, whether, mostly whether those committees are achieving what they set out to achieve, and whether or not we might need to tweak charters and, and make up of committees, if, if someone's happy to second that.
I'll second that, oh.
Is there any discussion? Of course, councillor Green?
Yep, uh, I think that's a, to review the charters, um, making sure that we're hitting the goals or hitting the, the ex, the expressed, um, objectives of the committees, uh, and that they are fit for purpose, and also complimentary to council's broader goals, I think is a very good idea. So, I'd be more than happy, um, to be working at those, um, charters over the six months, which I think is a good time, so we're not being pressed, you're not trying to compress things into a, a, um, short period of time, but actually, you know, being able to really read through and to think about and reflect on what, you know, what's happening and what maybe needs to change to make sure that, uh, you know, that our, our committees are dynamic and, uh, and meet their goal.
I just have a quick question, um, I believe there is a committee that we didn't nominate a councillor. Do we have to do anything about that to defer the decision in the motion, or does it stay as is, without nominating a councillor?
Uh, look, I think it depends on charters and all that sort of stuff, but I think we can just leave it for the moment, let the staff come back to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
And can I just point out also that I think on the Civic Risk Committee, we didn't put anybody on there, but we do have a, a staff member on that committee, is that correct?
Yes, it says that, yeah, it's the director of, uh, customer service, if I recall correctly what I said on there.
So, can we move forward without having a councillor, councillor representative?
I think, yeah, for the, for the moment, um...
That's a, is that an external one, or is it...?
It's an external one, it's part of our, uh, our insurance cooperative that we're, that we're...
Sort of make sure we're, we're not, not fulfilling our obligations by putting someone there while we...
Yeah, I think, I know, I know, um, yeah, once again, I think the staff can get back to us at the next meeting if there's anything that really needs to be adjusted. Probably once again, I've obviously been bombarded with information, so it's, yeah. Um, might be worthwhile for someone to be there, but we can work on that later on. All right, any further discussion? I'll put the motion, uh, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, I declare it unanimous, next item is COM zero three. Uh, uh, council meeting dates, January, December twenty, two thousand and twenty-five, page seventy-one, tab three, collection page seventy-one, councillor McNort.
Um, I'm happy to move that way with one amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes.
Uh, my amendment would be that the May meeting is held on the twenty-first of May, rather than the twenty-eighth of May, and I'm happy to explain why.
May, may...
Twenty, twenty-five, yeah.
Ye- yes, yep, so what, what date are you saying instead?
Um, the week prior, the twenty-first of May, rather than the twenty-eighth of May.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm happy to speak to it if I have a second, though.
Second, second, councillor Hart? Yes, would you like to...
Um, happy with all of that, I just think that, um, you know, we put a lot of work into the budget around that time of year, and by moving this meeting forward by one week, we give ourselves a little bit more time before the end of June meeting, after we put the budget on display, so it just gives us a little bit of contingency time.
Yep.
Um, I understand that this will be a change, and that people usually expect that meetings are held on the last Wednesday of the month. Um, so I'm happy for that to, although it doesn't have to, I'm happy for that to go on public display, that we are going to change that date, if, just for transparency to the people who would expect it to be at the end of the month.
Yep, councillor Carnib?
Yes, through the chair, I would like to move an amendment, uh, to the initial recommendation.
What's, what is the amendment?
About to, about to say it, I move that the report be adopted, uh, except for the times of the council meetings. I also move that the commencement, uh, of the council meetings be changed from two PM to six PM for all meetings scheduled in the report in two thousand and twenty-five. In addition to this, I move another point to the report, being dot point number four, which would lead on to page seventy-three for anyone following, to which would also change the commencement time for the two remaining council meetings in two thousand and twenty-four, scheduled on twenty November twenty twenty-four, and ten December twenty twenty-four, from commencing at two PM to change to commencing at six PM. I move that way.
So, you wanna, so you're saying to move the existing meetings as well, that for this year, as well, on top of, on top of that, okay. Um, that's a, it's a significant change, and in my view, that's a, um, foreshadowed motion rather than amendment? So, do you have a second or for the foreshadowed motion?
Whichever way.
Yeah, councillor Harle? Yep, okay, so, um, we'll deal with the substantive motion first, and then if that's not successful, then we'll move to the, we'll then move with the foreshadowed motion. Yeah.
Uh, sorry, uh, Mr. Mayor, I believe, uh, the substantive motion was seconded by me, not councillor Harle.
Yes, sorry, councillor Hart, yes, that was correct. Yeah, even a little lot, like, um, sorry, councillor, are you, did, did you want to speak any further? So, we'll deal with the first motion, so effectively the change is about having, moving to from two PM to six PM start times, um...
Sorry, can you repeat that?
The, effectively, there's two motions, there's the, there's the motion and then a foreshadowed motion, the difference being effectively, just in simple terms, is rather than starting at two, starting at six o'clock. Um, and that coming to, and then the other thing is about it coming to effect immediately.
Um, do we not have to vote on the substantive motion first, prior to the foreshadowed motion, correct?
Yep, yep, so, I don't know, councillor McNort, if you'd like to speak for your motion?
I would like to speak for my motion, um, and I, uh, okay, I'd like to, uh, just trying to think of a way to... Um, I think that the motion that I've, the, the, the amendment that I made is quite a, um, a reasonable one, I think that makes, um, sense for the community to have a little bit, gives us a little bit more time, um, around budget time, so I would hope that my fellow councillors would be on board with that. A lot of work goes into those workshops and coming up to the budget, no matter how much work...
Can I just interrupt you on that? Uh, councillor Carnib, do you have any issue with the twenty-first of May versus the twenty-eighth of May?
To be quite frank, uh, sorry, through the chair, to be quite frankly, Mr. Mayor, uh, being my first meeting, as it is with another five councillors, um, I support my foreshadowed motion.
Yeah, I'm with you, but I'm just saying that the issue of...
I just wanna raise, I just wanna raise to be clear, not at, whilst I don't fundamentally have an issue with the change of date, I would if it's at the expense of the foreshadowed motion, I just wanna raise that.
Hmm, no, I just wanna make sure that what we, like, there's no, if there's no point debating the twenty-eighth or twenty-first, then there's not, I think there's no point.
I don't raise, I don't raise an issue with that, no.
Yeah.
In speaking for my motion, can I, can I incorporate points that would be, uh, could be taken in, in, um, speaking against the foreshadowed motion?
Speak for your motion, and you can, and you can put, frame everything in that way, that's fine, how you do it.
Good, good, okay, thank you, um, look, thank you, um, I think that, you know, we, in the last term of council, we, um, went through quite the process of, uh, changing the council meeting times to be two o'clock in the afternoon, we went through a process of, um, putting the code of meeting practice on to public display, we had no, no comment about that, where we flagged that we would change to the afternoon meeting, and then some months after that, we started a three-month trial where we had two PM meetings, um, from my, my, um, from my memory, that was, that was a couple of months later, so we trialled the three meetings to be done at two o'clock. Uh, we surveyed the public and the staff that were involved in council meetings, and there was overwhelming support for two o'clock meetings, um, where we had, you know, I think it was, it was ninety-one out of a hundred responses from the community were in favour of a two PM start over a six PM start, and twelve of the fourteen staff members involved in, um, council meetings were in support of the two PM start over the six PM start. For me, I work full-time as well, so I don't mind when the council meetings are, but I am hesitant to make changes like this without...
Uh, against, uh, is this the, um, motion, um, by councillor McNort?
Yes.
Well, she was talking about times, but I don't see that on her motion, but...
Yeah, it's, it's part of the, the recommendation, has the times.
Yeah, uh, seeing as though we just had a recent election, um, being out in the, in the public, the overwhelming, uh, survey that I got from everyone was, change the times. So, um, I can only go by that.
Yeah, any other speakers for, um, or against, councillor Harle?
Uh, I speak against, uh, not having it, having it at six PM. While I agree with councillor McNort, the survey that was done sort of showed that, but I have also received numerous emails from residents who have to take the day off to come and speak at the forum, so they're not in favour. And the overwhelming majority that I found was actually the other way around. And in fact, most councils in New South Wales do, it in, do conduct the meetings in the evening. I understand the resources and all the issues involved with that, we've been on council for, I've been on council for sixteen years, and, and it's only last year or this term of council where we've had the meetings at two PM. But I believe that going back to six PM is a much better alternative, you do, residents who want to listen to the forum, you'd see how many people are here right now compared to what would be here if we had it at six PM. I understand that the, the issue with it, and we have had meetings at night time, go until midnight, there was one in, in particular, and it shouldn't. The maximum time is actually five hours, we're saying go from six till ten, that's four hours. And then if you did need something urgent, well, it's up to council to vote if you want the extra hour. I don't think you'll need it, we need to plan our meetings, our agenda, better than what we do, uh, if we're going to conduct meetings at night time. But I'm all in favour of going back to night time, it, it would help the community more so, and I understand the issues involved with resources, but I think it's something that's worthwhile and we should be doing instead.
Is there any other speakers for or against? Um, I should, well, yeah.
Sorry, go on.
I should just point out, sorry, um, because it's relevant to the, to the discussion, that to implement the change, you actually need a change of the code of meeting practice, which has to go on public exhibition. So, the first two points about changing the meetings for this year wouldn't be able to be done. Um, but if you want, you'd have to, the way the motion, we'd have to change the wording of the motion, which would turn around and say, here are the changes, put on exhibition, and then, once it's adopted by council, should council adopt it, then you could have those changes. So, it could probably more apply for next year versus...
My question, sorry, in relation to that, Mr. Mayor, is that the most up-to-date, uh, code of meeting practice was adopted on the twenty-sixth of October twenty twenty-two, is that correct?
I don't know the exact date, yes.
Okay, well, that's the, that's the copy I have, um, in front of me here, um, and it includes clause three point one, that council to trial daytime council meetings for a period of three months from June twenty twenty-two, uh, and councillor McNort, through the chair, Mr. Mayor, just referred to the fact that after those three months, the three-month trial concluded, the council then resolved to continue with two o'clock meetings.
Mm-hmm.
But it doesn't seem to have gone on public exhibition at that time to continue rather than, um, have a trial. So, why would it in this case need to go back out to, um, public exhibition if it didn't in the past, given that that was adopted on the twenty-sixth of October twenty twenty-two? Which is more than three months after the June meeting.
Yeah, so, I'll, um, I'll refer to the CEO, but I, I know there's a, there was a bunch of reports provided to council, um, with regards to that at the time, so whether it's reflected in here or not, I know there, there are reports, so it'd be good to, I think it'd be good to get a copy of those reports, and I think as councillor McNort pointed out, there was a lot of, um, community feedback and so on and so forth, so, they gets, I guess it gets down to two particular issues, is about, yeah, one, let's see those reports, but two, it's about the consistent way we make decisions, so if it's been on, it's been on exhibition, then it should be on exhibition again.
Yeah, well, it, it doesn't seem to have been on exhibition in the, to, to change the trial to a permanent basis.
Well, let's, I'll, I'll ask, I'll, I'll hand, through, through the CEO, um, if we can...
Thank you, through the chair, I'll just revert to, uh, the Director of Community and Lifestyles, so as to have some information about that.
Uh, thank you, through the chair, um, it wasn't sitting in my director at the time, but I do understand from my recollection, if I can get confirmation from Susan Renary, that it did go on public exhibition, uh, after the, during the trial period. Uh, it's just not reflected in the document, that's an oversight from the officers, which we'll need to update, but, um, Susan, can you confirm that?
Um, and if possible, could that, um, documentation please be provided?
Sorry, can I take that on notice? I don't know, I don't remember.
If you indulge us on a short recess, we can look into it if that's your preference.
Although, I'm, I'm happy to, yeah, but I think, I think ultimately, uh, it would get down to, um, the way I would recommend doing this, if you're gonna make this sort of a change, and because there's been consultation that's been done about it, notwithstanding people have made commentary about it, but there's a lot of commentary that exists, but it's gotta come through a proper process, being, what they call it, um, the community consultation, especially when it gets down to, uh, our policies. So, I think that my recommendation would be, uh, that we would go out there and, uh, you'd put this on exhibition, but I, I think changing the dates for this year is, is not, uh, i- is not the right thing to be able to do, I don't think we're, we're, we're able to with changing the time for those ones, but commencing it next year after consultation process would be better. Personally, I have no issues with having a night time meeting, but there, what you gotta look at is there's, there are impacts for, um, staff who've made adjustments, particularly, particularly in our next couple of meetings, so I think that's, um, becomes relevant, but, um, but I think, um, yeah, if I, through the CEO, I would be happy if your staff were to pull up those reports, um, yeah.
Yes, if I can just, through the chair, speak to, um, my foreshadowed motion, which I did, and I thank all the councillors for speaking, uh, one way or another.
Don't speak for your foreshadowed motion yet, it's, uh, you can speak against, you can speak against the, uh, the motion.
I'll, I'll speak against, um, councillor McNort's position, um, about changing the meeting times, and I echo, uh, the commentary by councillor Harle, uh, councillor Monahan and councillor Rostewski, uh, in saying that there is a large number, um, of residents, constituents, community members that want to be able to be at these meetings, and a large portion of those... And a large portion of those simply cannot because they commence at two P M. Now, whilst I understand, and I've heard some commentary about the change going on a public exhibition before the change. And I hear, Mr Mayor, your comments about not necessarily being against it. I think the current foreshadowed, the current position is pressed. However, I'm not against a recess that will allow the staff to be able to go back and determine whether or not the previous change in respect of the comments made by councillor Monahan did in fact go on, on public exhibition. And if they did, well, why weren't they recorded? Because I'm, I'm particularly interested in that. Because as you're aware, there's, well, number one, there's five new councillors. And whilst I, I respect that, that staff would have made alternate arrangements and this is a shift. This really is a shift in time and, and not the substantial aspects of the meeting. And historically, for as long as I can remember, apart from the last couple of years, council meetings did commence at six. So look, that's my position, but I'm content with a recess for the time being. And that'll allow staff to be able to look into that.
All right. So let's just, we'll, we'll just defer this to the end of the meeting and we'll give the staff time to do with that.
Can we, can we deal with it now? I don't think it, if it went on public exhibition, there should be readily available documents on the public website that should be able to be presented within, at least in the next ten minutes.
Yeah.
I, I'd prefer that we dealt with it now rather than shunting it to the end of, at the end of the meeting.
It's just about the, the, how much pressure you want to put on the staff, it's purely up to you. But yeah, that's all good. It's a.
It can be, it can be longer than ten minutes. I think it, it, I look, it's not my position.
If you want to call a recess, we want to call a recess, or you want to put it at the end.
No, no, you read my mind, Mr Mayor. That's exactly what I was suggesting.
I was going to call a recess in, in six minutes anyway, so.
Well, we're going to have sixteen minutes.
There you go. Done. I'll take that. All right.
Content with that.
Great. Well, I think that should give enough time. So yes, all right. We'll call a recess until three forty. Thank you, everyone. So we're back at it. We've had, we still have councillor McNort's motion. I think we've had a couple of speakers for and against. We have checked the resolutions previously. And the, my conclusion of them is that they are, they are, for want of a better term, convoluted. Now, with respect to that, my view is that, that, once again, a process was went through to make a change. And once again, a process should go through to make that change. As I said, I have no issues with having an evening meeting. And it probably works better for myself, but I'm just mindful of the community in, in, in doing so and the, and the process that we go through. And as this motion was about next year's meetings in particular, I think, I think that's where this should be starting from. Because there's nothing, well, let me put it this way, there was nothing conclusive that I've seen that says otherwise either for.
Given, sorry, Mr Mayor, given that two have spoken for, two have spoken against, I move that the motion be put.
Yeah, happy for that. Councillor.
Like my right of reply, if that's okay.
Yep, go for it.
I believe under the code of meeting practice, you have to go to, when the motion is being put, you have to have a vote on that immediately.
Look, councillor, I, I appreciate that you, you've just sat here. We've generally had a, a good free flowing discussion where people have allowed to, to speak more than not speak. And that's been the, the practice of this chamber for a while now. You know, if you want to get down to extremely strict interpretations of speaking for and against and not allowing a right of reply, happy to do so. But it's, it'll be applied evenly to everybody. But I just think it's not necessarily in the, in the spirit of how we've done things, because I think everyone is an elected official. And everyone should have an opportunity to say their, to say their words.
And then I'd like to have that motion withdrawn.
Just, thank you. Now we'll have councillor McNort, you, your right of reply.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So just to be, to be clear for myself personally, I don't mind when we have council meetings. It doesn't bother me at all. My, my, the reason I put forward the way that I did is because we went through quite an extensive consultative process last time. And we changed the times and it was well accepted. I have no, no problem going through a process to, to change the time again to, to six P M or any other time. My main concern is for the community who, who spoke out before, who will have a chance to speak again, should we go to a, a community consultation. And also for the staff, I, in good conscience, don't want staff leaving here at eleven o'clock at night after having worked during the day as well and driving home. In, in my good conscience, I don't want to be responsible for that. So I would, I would ask my fellow councillors to support me on the original motion. But, you know, that's, that's, that's what I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll now put the, the motion as moved by councillor McNort. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare the motion lost. We'll now deal with the foreshadowed motion. Councillor Cunib, would like to speak for your motion?
Yes, I would. I thank the recess, sorry, through the chair, I thank the time for the recess and I thank the opportunity and the director Tina Bono and the advice of general counsel. And I think rather than looking at the daytime trial of council meetings, which occurred on the thirty first of August, twenty twenty two, I think the convoluted fundamental flaw with what occurred was that an exhibition went out to the public, that the trial occurred. An exhibition never went out to change the meeting time from night time to daytime. So to put it bluntly, if we're moving it back to the status quo, whilst I can appreciate that this has been the system for the last two and a half years, the status quo is six P M. And speaking in terms of my opinion legally and on the discussions I've had with general counsel and Tina Bono, I'm not going to speak for them, but for myself, it would be in error and it would be misleading and deceptive to the community to go out and say public exhibition, to move the meeting time to six P M when we only ever moved the trial meeting to a public exhibition. So I think we need to be very careful with the way we move this. And I say that the foreshadowed motion raised by myself is the most adequate, legal and appropriate and distinct way to put it out to the community, that the meetings be reverted back to the status quo being six P M. And if fellow councillors want to move it back, then what should occur is a public exhibition should be put on notice for the two P M meeting and its survey and its response to be made permanent at two P M. Because currently that is not the case. And I'm content with the general counsel and the director Tina Bono to speak on this.
Yeah, well, thank you, councillor Cunib, just once again. So on that point, the, like I said, there was a process that went through. We have these here, I can run people through them. You know, significant people, community feedback, staff having their lives. My view is that to do this, and I don't see an issue with why we wouldn't want to talk to, to the community. Ultimately, we had the presentation yesterday about being consistent in our decision making. The view of changing the meetings, the next meetings for this year, I don't agree with that. I don't think that's, that's inappropriate, because I think there are work, health and safety issues that we need to be mindful of. There's a financial impact in doing so. There's a lot of staff here, staff time, staff lives, which we need to be mindful of. And as a workplace, so I'm, I'm, I'm not prepared to accept that meeting, the point, the point two of your, your, your resolution on that basis. If you believe that you don't want to go to exhibition for the meeting dates, you know, you, you can justify that to the community, I guess. But that's, I don't believe, I can't, I can't see how to, in its current form, without the information that we could deal with that today.
Say something. We've just recently had an election and I think that's a, and by the makeup of the composition, the community has been consulted. A lot of us have campaigned on, on changing the, the meeting dates to six P M. And I, I believe this is the first meeting after the election, that should be enough. And we need to show leadership. And I think the motion put by councillor Cunib should be put and voted on.
Thank you, councillor. So we've had, so you're speaking for, for the motion. You know, we have to have some speakers against the motion.
Rather, I'm wondering whether the mover and the seconder might indulge a, an amendment that, that, something along the lines, just that we continue for the rest of the year, the meetings at the way, at the times that they are now. And in that time, although not, although not necessarily mandated to, that we consult with the community and give them forward notice of the fact that we intend to change the time back to six P M, starting in the new year. Because I would like people to be, I, I would, I don't see the harm in, in consulting and being transparent about that change again, back to the six P M. And I would also ask that with consideration of the mover and seconder, that we still remain, whatever time of day it's held, that that may meeting be moved to the twenty first rather than the twenty eighth.
Yeah, well, I think councillor Cunib covered that he was happy with the twenty first issue. Yep, just confirming the mover.
Yes, I don't, I don't disagree with that.
Councillor Hart, seconder, happy with that? Yeah, okay, cool. Yeah, so councillor Cunib, in order to make your motion legal, we need to understand the financial implications of your motion. Because if you want, once again, if you want to start this from next month, we need to understand the impact that it has on staff. You know, if you go to the report, you talked, numerous staff were surveyed. Overwhelmingly, they provide this support for it. So yes, are you, you know, do you understand the financial impacts of this?
No, but what I will say is this, if the meeting changes, and it seems as though every councillor here is content with the meeting changing from January. Whilst there hasn't been a vote, it seems as though from the discussions we've had that that is the case. Now, my fundamental issue with this, it's my first council meeting. I will not commence with a document that's gone to the public, that was a trial, that went out to public exhibition in that form. And then council beforehand has come back and said, well, no, it's going to proceed this way. What should occur legally, in terms of my opinion, and I'm happy for, as I said, the general counsel to speak to it if he wishes. But what should occur is it should go back to six P M, because that's what has gone out to the public. The public hasn't been consulted on the permanent move to two P M. And I'm not going to defer that for two months. It's two dates. If everyone's in agreeance, and whilst I, look, I speak to the council staff as a whole, I appreciate that change is difficult. This is a new council. And whilst I understand the implications of times changes, other councils operate this way. Mister Rostev, councillor Rostewski's words about leadership. Whilst I understand that there might be some financial burdens, it's not, it's not the case that that wasn't the case for a large portion of last three decades. And I move that the motion be put.
All right. Thank you. And just regarding your motion being put, I have to, once again, I'm not, I won't be entering into the debate. But I don't believe point two is something can be worked with. My interpretation of the coding meaning practice and with regards to the relevant section was a three point, three point one. Yes, it talked about a trial and the trial concluded. And then council went out there and proceeded on an ongoing basis with the daytime meetings. So to me, the trial was successful and it was adopted. So therefore, if you do want to change it, you will need to change the code of meeting practice. Should you want to go out there and, I'm not a lawyer, if you guys want to go get legal advice, by all means, happy to do so. But my interpretation is, you've got to do that. Number two, the training that we had yesterday, which I don't think you were at, said that we need to be doing.
With respect, Mr, Mr Mayor, I was at, I was at the meeting, which part that you weren't at, but in any event, discussing who was at which parts of the meeting. We've got general counsel.
But you know, I'm, I'm not having a go, because I wasn't, I wasn't there for a long time myself.
But we've got general counsel here.
Yeah, sorry.
We can take that advice.
Thank councillor Cunib. So yes, so ultimately the, the general counsel's here, but I'm the chair of the meeting, I've got, I've got to deal with this. So what was covered in the part that you weren't here and that I was here, and I said I was only here for a small part of it, is that council needs to be consistent in its decision making. That was a fundamental point that was covered yesterday. So to be consistent in the decision making, is this was put on exhibition, it was adopted, it became a practice of council for two, over what, two and a half years, and just to change it immediately. And there was a significant process that went through. A hundred submissions came back, staff were consulted. You, you want to go out there and change, so there's, there's a lot of implication. So to be consistent, we must go through a similar process. So my view once again is, and I'm sure that, I think this would be supported by everybody, if you said, put on, allow the meeting to continue through this year, as advertised, as the community is aware of. Put it out there, let the community have their say, bring out the feedback, because we do consultation all the time with these matters. And from next year, because this motion deals with next year's meeting times, that's what this, that's what the recommendations book. And then next year, the community, you've had, people have had plenty of opportunity to provide their feedback. And we start from next year. That's a consistent way of making decisions.
Yeah, I'll just to speak on the motion that, or the shadow motion that councillor has put forward. Look, we're here for four years. There's no rush. We've got only two meetings to go. I think that is wise that we go back to the community and say, look, we want to make change to the meeting to six P M or two P M. And then once the community, everybody is done with the process and we come back, we do a vote. And I think we'll be happy with it. So we can argue back and forth, back and forth. Look, the year is going to end and we're going to have meetings for the next four years. So I believe that we should all calm down and just say, okay, let's finish the year. Beautiful, have a party. And then we consider our meetings next year, moving forward. That's my suggestion.
So are you, are you moving that, will that be an amendment to the motion that which would be, oh, hold on, no, not even. Yes, I'm disregard that. Yep. So, you know, I guess once again, you know, there are issues with regards to financial implications of your motion, which need to be under, the code of mini practice need to be, need to be dealt with.
Um, I, I just have a question.
Yes, councillor.
Are you ruling, are you ruling this out of order?
I'm looking at point two. And at this point in time, if I look, if I had to sit there and look at my interpretation of the code of meeting practice, right, I would say that I don't believe point two is something we can deal with in this scenario. My preference would be that point two be, put this on exhibition, right, for the changes for next year and go for it.
So just to, just to clarify, you're not ruling this out of order?
I'm hoping I don't have to. I'm hoping that we can come to.
Otherwise, I, again, I think councillor Cunib moved it be put.
Yeah, he's got to put, but we have to have, the debate hasn't finished. You have to allow two speakers for, two speakers against, you know.
Who we had, oh, hadn't we had two? We had just had Fiona and A J.
Yeah, but he wasn't, A J happened after councillor, councillor Cunib.
I, I move that the motion be put.
Yeah, okay.
Or, that was just before that's to occur, through the chair, Mr Mayor. I think it's prudent that whilst we have general counsel here on the floor and the director here on the floor, that before you, through the chair, Mr Mayor, make a ruling that it's out of order, that we look at the implications of making permanent after you've put on a public exhibition for a trial and then making that two P M meeting permanent. That's the problem. The problem isn't moving the meeting to six P M. I would say that the mechanism in which you raise would be problematic legally and otherwise. Because you haven't gone out to the public and said it should be two P M on a permanent basis. You've only gone out to a trial. So whilst I hear your concerns about the financial implications, there are legal implications. And I urge you to get the advice off, off general counsel. And Miss Bono, before you make a determination as to whether you're going to rule this out of order.
There's, there's other, once again, there is, there is other elements to it. So like I said, what are the financial implications of this?
There are also legal implications, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you.
It's also problematic to go out to the public and be inconsistent and borderline deceptive in our approach when we call for.
Sorry, councillor Cunib, that's, you have to, that point of order, you need to withdraw that.
I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw the comment. But the intention of the comment is this, that when you go out to the public, the public needs to be acutely aware of what you're asking. You can't go out to the public and say, we're going on a trial for three months and then make it permanent. It's like you can't sell somebody a two thousand and twenty Honda and say that it's a two thousand and twenty four Honda. It's the same thing and you just simply can't do it. And I won't be voting that way because it's improper and that's my position.
Okay, that's, so that's one element of it. And as you know, as a, yourself being a, being a lawyer, I'm not sure that lawyers go to court and agree with each other because they have different interpretations of it. So there's interpretations. Putting that aside, the legal element, under the code of meeting practice, there's financial implications. This resolution has a financial implication. So it is prudent and consistent in good decision making to understand what that is. You can put another question to the staff to work out what are the financial implications of this motion? What are the work and, and the other elements of it? So that's one part of it. Like I said, I'm happy to go to night time, more than happy to. But you've got to go through a proper process.
Through the chair, Mister Mayor, if you're happy to go to night time.
Yeah.
If it's, you're happy to go to night time, then you can't possibly rule that it's out of order. And it needs to be put to a vote.
No, 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 you're, you're not saying councillor Kinnip, that this, there has to be consistent decision making. That was what we talked about yesterday during the training, right? There has to be a process.
And consistency is also about being transparent with the public.
Just because we all agree, it doesn't mean we can move away from public exhibition and consulting with the community.
I completely agree.
That's my point.
I completely agree, which didn't occur last time. That's the fundamental flaw. And I can't hear anybody, councillors or otherwise, speaking against what I've said in, in that respect. Whilst there are financial implications, there are other implications that we must be aware of.
So just I want to go through the process. I'll go through the report.
Um, I, again, I, I did say that I move that the motion be put. I, again, would reiterate that the motion be put.
Yeah, okay. So if you want to put the motion, motion be put, have you had your right of reply? Yep, no worries. Well, I'm ruling, I'm ruling point two out of order.
I'm moving a motion of dissent in that ruling. On what basis is it unlawful?
It's because it's a, you have to amend the code of meeting practice.
But we just, but it wasn't amended from the trial to permanency.
It's, it's.
Can I, can I ask that the general counsel provide some legal advice on this?
Yeah, sorry, thank you. It's my, what do they call it? It's a, I'm chairing the meeting and I have to do this. So that's my point of view. You want to move a motion of, a motion of dissent, yeah, so be it, go for it, you mean? But ultimately, ultimately, you've got to be consistent in your decision making.
I've moved the motion of dissent.
Okay, all right, I'll put the motion of dissent. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, so, sorry, councillor Hall, was your hand up? Huh? Before, okay, great.
Can I call a division as well?
Yep, no worries. All those, and all those in favour of the motion of dissent, please raise your hands. Against, so you got to stand up for divisions. Against. I'll clear the motion carried.
Can I move that the foreshadowed motion moved by councillor Kinnib and seconded by councillor Hall in its current form be put?
Yeah, I just need to get some legal advice on that matter first. Because once again, if the motion, I'm not allowed to put, you can, just because your interpretation of legality is different than mine, doesn't mean that I can put the motion forward.
I'm content with a recess for you to, to be provided with that advice.
No problems. I'll call a ten minute recess. Thank you. First, I want to apologize to everyone. My apologies. I'm, I'm, I said, I'm, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but I think going forward, I need to have that level of interpretation on our policies, considering we have two new lawyers who've just been elected, or one who gets admitted to the bar, is it, on Friday? Or did I hear councillor Monahan?
I wish it was the bar, but no, it's just the Law Society. That's the first step.
That's the first, excellent. So we'll make sure that, that, that we will prepare to disseminate information interpretations on the level of sin that you accept and I, and I apologize for that.
Standard that an organisation that's as large as some ASX two hundred corporations would expect, I believe, is what the acting CEO said the other day.
Indeed. So on that, so the first point is, we have a resolution of council that was resolved back in December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty three, which set meeting dates. In order to alter that, you would need to rescind that motion for, for you to amend the dates for this year. So, because that motion is still a standing motion. So I'm happy to, if you want to put a rescission motion in, by all means, rescind that motion. That's the, under the code of meeting practice, section seventeen point three.
I'll just, through the chair, if I can refer all councillors and all staff to the code of meeting practice in particular.
And under section seven point one of the code of meeting practice.
No, if I could just finish.
No, no, one sec councillor. Under section seven point one of the code of meeting practice, when you are talking to, if the mayor is in the chair, you refer to him as Mister or Madam Mayor.
Mister Mayor, apologies. Eighteen point one on page thirty six says the time limits on council meetings. Meetings of the council and committees of the council are to conclude no later than eleven P M without an extension for meetings which commence at six P M. Meetings are to be a maximum of five hours.
Yep.
That is the code of meeting practice as of today. This meeting should have always occurred at six P M. It's in there. It doesn't need to be rescinded. It's what's the practice.
But yeah, but thank you, but that's agreed. You have, there is that point that we've identified as general counsel has provided that information to us, is that the inconsistencies and interpretations could be looked at in either way, right? And he's happy to provide any further advice on that. Having said that, there is still a resolution of council, which ultimately stands above that. The resolution is done, the dates are exhibited, exhibited, and they're out there. If you want to alter those dates, you have to rescind that motion and deal with it. Right, that's, that's where, that's where the starting point is.
I, I just don't see the necessity of that when the code of meeting practice says commence at six P M. That's the practice.
Because the code of meeting practice says you must resolve the times and the, so you have to resolve the time and the dates which count this resolution as done.
But then isn't it the case that you would need to try to move the meeting to two P M if that was your, if that was your preference? Because it says here that the meeting is meant to start at six. That's my point.
It says that, but there was also the resolution, if we go back, if we go back to it. Can we bring up the December thirteenth? So ultimately, it's about this resolution taking, taking precedence. Right, so that's, that's the resolution adopted, motion was carried, accepted in the minutes, which says confirms the meetings for the next calendar year are these times and these dates. So to change that, you need to rescind that motion. Right, that's the technical process you want to go through. Right, so if you'd like to rescind it, by all means, rescind it. And then inside of that, you provide an alternate motion, that's point number one, point number two. And you also need to get the financial impacts of the decision going forward. Let's do that and we're happy. We can progress on.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Well, then I rescind that motion and I put the motion. That particular motion of the dates and times that the council resolved at a previous meeting, which I was in party to. But in any event, rescind that motion. I'll move that way.
Yep, you have to go by the, the code of meeting practice to rescind the motion and follow that process that exists within the code of meeting practice.
Mister Mayor, I'd be assisted by which provision?
Seventeen point three, page thirty four. Seventeen point, seventeen point six. And I'll, once again, I'll reiterate, councillor, I think no one has an issue with going night time meetings. Happy to start them from next year, but we're just saying that, yeah. Took the process to change them. Once again, just have to follow the process.
Sorry, I'll take my microphone off, councillor.
Yeah, Mister Mayor, who's determined this process? Because it seems very ambiguous. The legal council doesn't seem to know. It's, just seems all ad hoc.
The process is under the act when council makers, makes, council makes a resolution, which is done. It's public exhibit, like the report in front of us. Council sets the meeting dates for the upcoming year. And that's what was done. And it's a motion of council. The, the question regards to ad hoc is, once again, it's the code of, it's whether the inconsistencies and contradictions probably is probably better in the code of meeting practice.
So I, I believe that with my recording, it was set by the old councillors before we came in. So if we can look at it and then basically refer to the point that you're making and look at the calendar again and start from next year. New year, we have new year party, new year resolution, new year vision. And then we can all come back and agree on what the legal team and the lawyers, councillor Kamel, Kamel is saying, or same, is saying that, you know, if we can move it to six P M, I think everybody will be happy with that and so that we can have a happy Christmas this year.
Yep, and you would probably want to include as part of your motion, councillor Kinnib, is that you'd probably want to amend the code of meeting practice to remove section three point one, because once again, the interpret, this says three point one, timing of ordinary council meetings. The council shall by resolution, and once again councillor says to your point, by resolution, set the frequency, time, date and place of its ordinary meetings, right? Which is what there was resolved back in December two thousand and twenty three and what we're trying to deal with now for the upcoming year. It does then also state that council to trial daytime council meetings for a period of three months from June twenty two, where the meetings are started at two P M, meanings of the maximum duration of five hours. So if you would like to, to prevent any ambiguity, I would then recommend that you remove the second part, the second sentence in clause three point one on page four of the code of meeting practice, which was adopted in October, two thousand, twenty sixth of October, two thousand and twenty two, with the relevant trend number one, seven, eight, nine, three, three, point two zero, two, two.
Mister Mayor, if we're amending the code of meeting practice, will that mean it needs to go out to exhibition again?
The code of meeting practice will, right? That's regardless. But I think to clean this up and to prevent this from happening and to remove again, remove, I would say, I would put a point in your motion to say, remove that from the code of meeting, put that, put that exhibition, right? We can, we can sit there and adopt for next year's dates to be from six P M going forward, right? That's regardless. The issue, and if you want to change the, the meeting dates for this year, you need to rescind the motion of December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty three.
Through the chair, Mister Mayor, I'd like the opportunity to have a chat with the general counsel about the best way forward because it's clear that we're all lockheads.
Well, you can ask, you can, you can put a question to the, the general counsel through the CEO.
Okay, well, I, through the CEO, I put a question to the general counsel. So would you agree that the current time on eighteen point one in the code of meeting practice states that the meetings to commence at, at six P M and finish no later than eleven P M? That's the current code of meeting practice. It's on page thirty six, if that's, if that assists.
Through the CEO, is it okay if I answer this question?
Thank you for the question, councillor. I revert to the general counsel for his opinion.
May I, may I take a slightly roundabout way to it, councillor, if that's okay? I think, I think it would be fair to repeat in open council things which people have asked me, my responses to things that people have asked me outside. So, so there's a, there's a few things which I think are, are quite clear and a few things which I think are less clear, but I'll, I'll, I'll get to that. The first thing is that council is required to adopt a code of meeting practice. We have to follow the things in the model code of conduct. We can add some things provided they're not inconsistent with the model code and then we've got to apply it. I think that's all quite clear. One of the things which is in the model code is that we need to set, we need to say in the model code what the frequency, date and time of meetings will be. At the moment, I think there are countervailing arguments about what that code says the start and finish, the start time should be. And the thing which confuses it is you've got in one place, as you've pointed out councillor, that it says six P M. Another place that says we're trialling two P M, says for three months and that seems never to have been resolved.
Sorry, to, to just interrupt you, so we're talking about, just for everyone to follow here, because we're not, none of us are here is a, as I, as I, well, we're not learned, we're not learned friends because we're not very learned, except for a few of you in this chamber. The questions of, of discussion now is section three point one, time of the ordinary council meetings. And councillor Kinnib, you're talking about section, what's your relevant section you're referring to?
Eighteen point one.
Eighteen point one. So I was wondering, could you just, I, I read out, everyone before, I read out section three point one. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I read out section thirteen, three point one and provided my view as chair on that and recommendations that should happen, which, that's under the title, timing of ordinary council meetings, which says council sets a meeting time and date, which you refer to. But general counsel through the CEO, could you, would you be able to read out section eighteen point one and provide its relevance to the discussion that you're referring to councillor Kinnib?
Yes, I can. Eighteen point one says, meetings of the council and committees of the council are to conclude no later than eleven P M without an extension for meetings which commence at six P M. Meetings are to be a maximum duration of five hours.
So does that clause, I'm happy if you want to councillor Kinnib, does that clause say what time meetings are supposed to start? Because what, what's your interpretation of it councillor Kinnib?
Do you want?
Oh, I'll, I'll see what councillor, sorry, councillor Kinnib's interpretation.
The interpretation is that it says the meetings of council and committees of the council are to conclude no later than eleven P M without an extension for meetings which commence at six P M.
Which commence at six P M.
That's correct.
So it doesn't say that council meetings are supposed to commence at six P M.
I know, but Mister Mayor, you can't have two contradictory things.
Yeah, that's what I want to clarify.
Where one states a trial and then this says the ordinary times of the meetings in essence, but then you're conducting meetings on an ongoing basis at two P M.
So I'll just go to general counsel. Can you just provide that? Like, does that, because it's under the, it's under the section, time limits on council meetings. I don't see it, I don't see it saying that council meetings commence at six P M.
I think, I think the position in the code of meeting practice that we have in front of us today is not particularly clear about the start time of council meetings. Because it refers to a trial for three months, it refers to a two P M start time. In other places, it refers to meetings commencing at six P M. That is in section eighteen point one. So the position I think is not particularly clear.
Sorry, through, through the CEO, and I'm reading section eighteen that says time limits on council meeting. And it says, meetings of the council and committees of the council are to conclude. So it talks about a finishing time, no later than eleven P M, without an extension. So I, not meetings of council and committee should conclude without a meeting, which commence at six P M. Doesn't say that they.
Mister Mayor, if I may, just to get clarification from councillor Kinnib's perspective on this. It says council and committees of the council. So by that definition, wouldn't that mean all committee meetings should be starting at six P M?
Just in response to councillor Hart's question, by definition, yes, that's what it says.
Is that in practice? No.
Can, can I say something? Yesterday we were educated on this and one of the things that the guy said was use the reasonable person test. And I think what councillor Kinnib is saying, the reasonable person would, would conclude that meetings start at six P M.
Just, Mister Mayor, if I can just say this, if, if there is a time indicated in the code of meeting and practice, it's, it's not there for show. It's there to guide council as the code of meeting practice. It would be certainly very ambiguous for it to, to mean anything apart from what time. It would be certainly very ambiguous for it to, to mean anything apart from what time the council. Uh meeting should commence and finish, otherwise what's the point of having a time? In there if it doesn't allow, for example, if if what you're saying is correct, that it doesn't say that it's meant to start at six and finish at eleven. Then why don't, why wouldn't it just say time limits on council meetings that the meeting should take no longer in terms of a duration of five hours? Why does six P M and eleven P M, why is it even mentioned in the code of meeting practice?
Yeah, so if you, if you read that, once again, it's because it says that meetings had to be a maximum duration of five hours. So that's clear, I think anyone disagrees with that, right? And the clause talks about time limits on council meeting, right, so the substantive part of this paragraph, of this point is about the time limit. And it says. For which commence at six P M, right? So it's not actually talking about a starting time, it's giving six P M and as an example. Versus section three point one, which says that council by resolution sets a frequency, time and date of its ordinary meetings. Which is what we've done, right? So it's actually, the code of meaning practice doesn't actually say what time a meeting starts, that six P M is used as an example. Would you agree with that?
No, with respect, I don't, I'd ask you, Mister Mayor, what you, what is your answer to the fact that why is the time in there to begin with? If it's simply a time limit heading in the code of meeting practice? What's the purpose of having six P M and eleven P M in there if it's not to be abided by? And again, if I could just finish, what's the purpose of three point one by saying that the trial period is to commence at two P M? So in two parts of the code of beating practice, we've got two differing times. We've got the ordinary times that are set from six to eleven.
Mm hmm.
I, I accept what you say about the fact that the heading says time limit.
Mm hmm.
But then you've got a trial period that says two to seven. What's one reasonable person, as Mister, as councillor Restevsky referred to earlier, meant to think that when you've got a time limit? And exceeding the duration, but then you've got a trial period for three months, isn't, isn't one reasonable person meant to assume that? Once the trial period of three months concludes, that you resume back to what's indicated earlier?
I, I would think a reasonable person would pick up the beginning of this in section three point one. If I were to look at what time a meeting starts, I would look under the title, timing of ordinary council meetings, right, which is clear. Which then says council shall by resolution, set the frequency, time and date of its meetings, right? Like, that's it. The other part just talks about, it's like an F Y I, it's trialling for a period of three months. But that trial is not negated, doesn't say it expires because section, the first part of that says the time and dates, which is. What was resolved in December, you know? This is just providing, I go back to, so then you look, if you're reading this time limits, yes, five hours, and it's saying that. There are to be, because this became up from a work, health and safety issue. Council meetings, you heard about them going past midnight, one o'clock, councillor, the deputy mayor referred to one earlier, you mean? And that's what that was put into place because there's a work, health and safety issue if you're having very extremely long meetings. So and then if you then read the note, it then even talks about that into, when you look at it, that's all a work, health and safety issue there. So councillor McNaul?
Mister Mayor, with the caveat that I've said a million times in here, I don't mind what time we start the meetings. My interpretation of eighteen point one here covers scenarios whereby um. Committee meetings such as the environmental advisory committee, which starts at seven P M, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's seven P M. Um so meetings and meetings of the committees are not to go later than eleven o'clock. Or five hours, but they're not to go later than eleven o'clock. So a meeting which starts at six can't go later than eleven because it's, that's the five hours, but meetings can start at any time. They just can't go longer than five hours or beyond eleven P M. That's my interpretation of that, and we certainly have committee meetings that start after six P M.
Hmm.
But regardless of how long they go for, obviously can't go beyond eleven.
So that, does, does it, does it say that? Because if it's saying, if you're saying that example councillor McNaul, that it starts at seven P M? Sorry, thank.
Meetings of the council and committees of the council are to conclude no later than eleven P M.
Without an extension for meetings which commence at six P M.
So they have to finish by eleven.
No.
If you can't have an extension of a meeting that starts at six past eleven. But it doesn't say what times meetings have to start, it says to me, all meetings must be finished by eleven. They can't go longer than five hours and a meeting that starts at six can't go longer than eleven because you can't extend past eleven.
So I don't, I don't read that. I read, I read, I read if it starts at, you know, it can't go, it says meetings to be for maximum five hours. And for, and then, because then it says, yes, eleven P M, but for meetings which commence at six P M.
I agree with you, but I think that what this covers are situations like. Meetings that start at seven or eight P M can't go past eleven either. But what they're saying is if you start at six, which is the five hour limit, you can start it, if meetings have a five hour limit. If they start at two, they can't go beyond seven. But any meeting that starts after six, which would go beyond eleven P M with that five hour limit. Cannot go beyond eleven P M, they can't be extended beyond eleven P M. So a meeting that starts at six can go till eleven, a meeting that starts at five, my interpretation is, can go until. For five hours until ten and then have an extension until eleven because meetings can go till eleven. But a meeting that starts at seven cannot be extended beyond eleven and a meeting that starts at six with a five hour limit cannot be extended beyond eleven. But you can have extensions that don't go beyond eleven.
A fair point, and once again, I guess this.
I've got a question for the general counsel through the C E O. Mister General Counsel, I apologize for the overwork today without notice, but the, the, I've got a particular question. The resolution passed at the previous meeting that set the time for ongoing meetings of two thousand and twenty five, for example.
So you mean twenty four?
Sorry, twenty four. I, I thank you, Mister Mayor, for the clarification. How can I ask, how can that be legal, that motion as it stands? If the council was improperly informed as to the code of meeting practice, how can one supersede the other? In circumstances where something already in the code of meeting practice hadn't been amended, which requires a public exhibition? How can that, oh, oh, my question to you essentially is, how is that legal in circumstances where it postdates? It postdates the um what's, 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 um what's noted in three point one and eighteen point, eighteen point one?
So I, I don't think I finished answering your first question, to be honest.
It's my fault.
So it, perhaps if I do that.
Please do and then continue on.
Yeah, that's fine.
I promise I won't interrupt you, I can't promise for anyone else.
So, so going back to, to where I was, I, I think the position in the current code of meeting practice is not clear. And I think it should be made clear. And to make it clear, we will need to prepare a draft code of meeting practice and that will need to be the subject of public exhibition. I, I, I think that, I, I can say that with some confidence. In terms of what the status quo should be. I can see arguments going in both directions. If you, if you were to ask me whether the motion that was passed to set the dates for twenty twenty four was clearly unlawful, I don't think I could say that categorically. Nor do I think I could say categorically, as I sit here today, that the foreshadowed motion to change dates is unlawful. Insofar as it's dealing with twenty twenty five. I would just briefly, if I may. Um address the point that the mayor raised around rescission. So I think at the moment what you have is a council report to set dates for twenty twenty five and a foreshadowed motion. Which seeks to then also change them for, to, to, sorry, to set them for twenty twenty five and change them for twenty twenty four. I think there's an interesting question about whether. In straying into twenty twenty four, that is altering or rescinding a motion that has previously been. A resolution previously been passed by council. And whether that should be following a um the requirements of notice. Under the code of meeting practice. I, I think I got there councillor in terms of answering your question. I'm sorry I went a bit further, but I thought it might be helpful.
Thank you, general counsel.
Yeah. So I, 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 I think there's, you're, you're at a point where, and that's the end, yes. And thank you, general counsel, and thank you for councillor Kineb for recognizing his, his efforts interpretation. And I guess this is why lawyers have jobs for, and it's about interpretation, so I don't know if, what, once again, uh do you feel you want to get? I, I think there's, if there's a, the larger issue here is ensuring, which is what you and councillor Monahan made clearly, is that you want to make sure that the. The code of meeting practice is clear and consistent and council is abiding by it. So I think that needs, I think we should send it out, get an external review, a legal review of the code of meeting practice to make sure that it is. Uh that it's all in order. Uh and I think that matter can be dealt with it as well with respect to um. And, and I think we should be getting a, getting a, getting the legal advice on it that would actually cover. Clause three point one and section seventeen point, or whatever one that we were talking about, my apologies, the, the count, eighteen, was it eighteen?
Eighteen.
Because I, once again, I wouldn't want to. Yeah, so, yeah, because then, once again. Like I said, I think the will, everyone is happy for a nighttime meeting, no one has an issue with it, you know, no one, I think, so if you look at it, no one has an issue with your point of.
Yes.
Point one, from what I'm gathering, um I think that's all good. Um I think point two is where the issue becomes, and I said there's got to be a rescission motion with that. Um point three, I think no one has an issue with it. Um but then you got, yeah, point four, um I think point four is where it should be, yeah, remove that out of there. That gets rid of that ambiguity from it, but then I'll say I put a point five and get it externally reviewed. Um to make sure that it's um, that it's all, that it's all in order. That's, that's my, so I reckon, once again, if you remove point two, we can move forward. And I think I would assume that everyone would be happy with that way.
I just want to note, Mister Mayor, that um the model code of meeting practice from the office of local government says for eighteen point one. Uh meetings of the council and committees of the council are to conclude no later than, and then in brackets, council to specify the time. It has no reference to a, a meeting starting at a specific time, so I think when this was drafted and written and resolved and adopted. Um they might have added that part of six P M being in there, but I think the intent of the model code of meeting practice by the O L G. Specifies the time of which the meeting should be ending, not when the time it should be starting.
Hmm.
First of all, I want to thank general counsel, because he's answered a lot of tough questions on short notice. Um and I think that based on the advice we've received, and that's why I always think it's prudent to obtain advice from general counsel and the, and the experts in the room. Um that on that basis and other consultations. Um in the intervening period, I think it's in, in the essence of considering the staff and the time and not elongating this issue any longer. That we remove, uh we remove the times for this year, which is point two, um which is point two.
Yep.
And in terms of uh the meetings to commence, point one needs to read that the meetings will commence at six P M rather than two P M. Uh for each, uh for each monthly um meeting uh scheduled in two thousand and twenty five. And also for the amended May date as brought forward by councillor McNaul, which I don't see anyone taking an issue with. In terms of uh three, if I could just speak to that, amend the code of meeting practice adopted in October twenty twenty two to remove clause three. One is shown below and place the revised code of meeting practice on public exhibition for a period of twenty eight days.
Yeah.
Go on, yes, of course.
Uh should we remove uh point three until we get um a revised code of meeting practice back to council? And then determine whether that needs to be amended?
In circumstances where, and this is my view, and I'm happy to hear councillors' opinions, but in it. If the position is that point one is adopted, then I don't see. And I, 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 I see that point four should go ahead first, that the revised code of meeting practice is externally reviewed. I think that because of the robust discussions we've had today with general counsel heavily involved. I think it would be um best practice to have, because obviously he's heard our concerns and what we think and which particular parts need to be looked at. Um that it'd be sent back to the general counsel um for review before it comes back before us.
Yeah, so, yeah, just one, I, I want one second, so you're saying, yeah, remove, remove point three. Because that will come up as part of a review of in point four.
I, I'm happy to hear thoughts, I just, that's what councillor Hart said, yeah.
So you're wondering if, if we should, our point two should be that we note. That, that, that point three, that, that, that particular clause of, of um three point one. It, it needs to be, so we're noting that there is an ambiguity. That's the problem, is that this is, it's been ambiguous, so if we can note that, um, you know, so are we noting it? That's part of the meeting that we've, we've, in discussion that we've had. And then four is with a, well, it's all going to be reviewed anyway, but then that won't be lost because we're noting it in the minutes.
I, I, I agree with, with councillor Dr. Widdow, so just say, just, sorry, just before I lose my train of thought. Mister Mayor, uh, part of three, I think it needs to be um written, more explicitly noted uh through the, through uh this particular area that. It's, it's completely, eighteen point one as it currently stands at three, at least we can agree that they contradict one another. And it's ambiguous in the sense that general counsel even agreed that it's arguable on both ends in the sense that. The time limits at eighteen point one indicate a time, um and the time limits uh in terms of the trial. As when it sets the frequency in three point one, set a frequency and, and time limit on the trial. So I think it needs to be noted in there that those particular aspects, three point one and eighteen point one, need to be consistent. Um and abide by a, a particular time moving forward and of course. No, well, it seems as a council resolved um at the previous meeting when the time should occur for two, oh, sorry, the dates for two thousand and twenty five.
Yeah, can, can I say rather say is ambiguous to say it requires clarification? So, um, all right, so we dealt with the first part, but then we're not putting, we're not putting on exhibition. We're not ma- we're not making a change, we're just noting, so therefore there's no need to put on exhibition. Sorry, microphone please councillor Green.
Sorry, we'll be going to exhibition after the review. Uh of the code of practice and whatever changes are recommended from that.
Comes back to us.
So we're just noting it so that we don't lose it, that, that, that particular area is a problem.
Yeah, cool, so we maybe add on to point four, um that externally reviewed and reported back to council?
Not to, not to, sorry, through Mister Mayor, um not to highlight the obvious, but I think that, 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 that point four should be done as, as quickly as is possible. Because I think we've concluded that it's, it's, it's got its, it's incorrect, it's, it's got, it's, it's got significantly problematic. Because it's inconsistent with what we've done moving forward and the previous councillors on a different, on, on a different council have made a decision based off it and unfortunately it was wrong.
Yeah.
Um so that's, that's why, yes.
So then, you know, it's prioritized?
As a priority, yeah, it's because it's very relevant, yeah. Yep, so, and the last, and to put the, to finish the bow then, we just have to put some funding source. Uh as a point five, I'm not going to say the legal budget because I know that's been used recently. You, general counsel didn't get that one? No, he's refusing to.
Can council report back?
Um. Yeah, so, um, well, ca- um. The, the, that uh council fund the review from general funds?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, obviously, all the rest is needed, a budget allocation, I'll just refer to director of corporate services.
Through, through you, C E O, um just from a rough, rough estimate. I think that we're looking at about four thousand dollars per council meeting. Of staff who will get paid overtime, senior staff don't, but all the other staff do. Um I just did some rough numbers um for, you know, ten staff at a rate, and it's about four thousand dollars per meeting. Uh if you allow twenty four thousand, given that we're talking from next year, um for six meetings. Uh and then as part of the June budget review, uh we will obviously have some facts, some actual data in terms of what, what the payments were for the several months.
Sorry, director, yeah, oh, yeah, no, I understand that rationale in relation to proposed later meeting times, it actually wasn't the question, it was the funding source. As to the external review.
General fund.
So general funds, thank you.
Oh, um sorry, I had councillor Hart, did you still want to speak now, councillor McNaul?
Thank you, I wonder if the mover and second will indulge me again with one um additional point. Being that because we are going to plan to change these meetings come the new year, that we, that social, that council does some. Social media and, and kind of awareness to the community about those changes coming in the new year, please.
Is it a point ticking? Okay.
As a mover and seconder. Happy with that?
Yep.
All right. Would you like to write a reply, councillor Green? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Declare unanimous. Next item, com zero four, LG New South Wales Annual Conference, page seventy-five, tab four, recommendation on page, uh, seventy-five. Basically, simple one, is anyone who doesn't want to go to Tamworth, because we have ten delegates and there's eleven of us. Not able to go? You're not able to go? All right, no worries, so we would, um, there is a registration fee involved. Pardon? Yeah, um, do you have any indication of who wants to go as a, who wants to go, because, uh. I'm on the board, so I have to go. Um, but I don't know if I need to be registered, I don't know if we can just, through the CEO, if we could maybe check whether I actually need, whether I'm automatically a delegate because I'm the board of LG N S W. Does anybody remember what Nathan used to do? Uh, he went, he was a. All right, anyway, we'll just, we'll just find out, anybody, you're not going, do you want to go?
Look, I'd love to go, but I just will, uh, contemplate the dates and revert back to whoever's in charge of that area, yeah.
Through, uh, councillor Ball, it'd be great, Mira, you want to go? Yes, yeah, councillor Hart, yes, councillor Moon? Yep, okay, check, councillor A J?
I have to check with the boss.
Okay. Councillor McNair?
I am the boss, so yes, I'll go.
Uh, councillor Green, you've already said, councillor Monahan?
Um, I'll have to check the dates and get back to you.
All right, councillor Restevsky? Pardon? No, okay, right, so, um. There was, uh, so I think we just resolved, um, that basically, if we gave everyone who wants to check, give everyone a week to come back. Yep, and just. By the end of, or by the end of this week. You can still go but not be a delegate, I guess, right? Yeah. Will support councillors confirm directly with the CEO? No? Yep, um, and the voting delegates, uh, the voting delegates, well, I think we just need to, for those who register by Friday, are voting delegates.
Um, I can provide clarification on my dates now, um, I'm, I'm not free those dates.
So basically, there's one, two, there's, yeah, four, yeah, I'll leave, everyone can work out their, um. But I think, does that work as a motion? Yeah, and, yeah, council advise who can go, see if we can. Yep, okay, I'm happy with that, um. Move councillor A J, do we have a seconder? Council Deputy Mayor, Hart?
Harold. Yeah. Harold.
It's only that, it's only, it's, um. Okay, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare that unanimous. Okay, com zero five, grants, donations and community sponsorship, uh, reports, page seventy-nine, tab five, recommendation page seventy-nine, and thank for those who have been very patient for you for this matter.
Move as per the book.
Moved, uh, councillor McNair, second and deputy mayor.
Just a quick question, um, one of them, core community services, um, is a, uh, conference. Uh, it doesn't include councillors, I think it's important that, especially when it's on family and domestic violence, that councillors also be invited to attend that as well. It's quite an important conference, um, if we can add that in there.
I'll refer to the CEO, because I don't know if it's really our gig to be able to invite ourselves, councillor Sev, if you know what I mean, but, um. Because any staff members can provide any clarification through the CEO?
Oh, yeah, through the chair, um, thanks councillor for the question, absolutely, absolutely important. I just don't know whether it sits in this res, if, in relation to the grant. Uh, what we can undertake though is we will reach out to core community services and ask them about access for our team, if that's okay.
And, and it raises, and going back to your urgency motion, because that raises one issue, this raises another issue about whether. When there are conferences and things like that, when councillors want to go and how they get dealt with, I, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't remember the exact process. But, um, when we review, I'm sure the numerous other policies that we have, we can deal with, I think it's in the councillor expenses policy. Yes, yeah, yep, all right, all right, on that, we're happy to.
I've just got a couple of questions, uh, through the chair, uh, through, through the CEO, uh, through the chair, through the CEO, um, uh, some of these grants.
Can I, I'll just clarify, so when you, if you want to ask, if you want to ask the staff a question, you can go through the CEO, if you want to, everything else through the mayor.
Thank you, I appreciate the clarification, um, uh, just a question on some of these, um, uh. The dates on which some of these events or festivals or, uh, the like have occurred. Um, some of them have occurred quite some time ago, and I'm just wondering why that, something that occurred, say, on the twenty-fourth of August. Or the nineteenth of July, um, haven't been to council, uh, for approval prior to. The, prior to the time that they were held? Is, is that a standard practice? Yeah, oh, yeah, sorry, I'll be more specific, page eighty-nine, um, and page eighty-eight, yes.
I know we amended the policy before the CEO, I know we amended the policy to allow things to happen a month afterwards, so I know there was something like that, but I'll give the CEO.
Yeah, thank you for the question, I'll, I'll just refer directly to Director Community and Lifestyles in relation to that. So this is Sawaki Group, Tina, on page eighty-nine, is the one of reference. And I guess the Nepalese community on eighty-eight.
Uh, through CEO, the policy currently states that we can do retrospect for a month, so I'm unclear. Um, of why these states, if it's an oversight by the officers, um, or, uh, because that's the current policy as it stands. Uh, Jackie Newsen, are you familiar with, uh, these dates?
I, I, sorry, if I can, I think the count, the policy was about, uh, when they apply, not when it comes to council, I think that was.
Yes, but it's up to a month after the event.
So is it the case that an organisation can apply to council up to a month after the event for the funding? Okay.
Through the CEO, if I may, uh, yes councillor, that's the case, and obviously this, um, we've had a, a longer than average. Wait time between, uh, council meetings due to the election, which has also made additional complexity there. But typically, yes, the policy states up to a month post, uh, event, applicants can apply for funding.
Um, now, just to follow up, a separate question, um, the information that's provided as to the applicant. Is simply the name of the organisation, um, it doesn't provide information about the public offices or who may or may not be on the board of these organisations. So that we would be in a better position, um, to declare potential conflicts of interest if those names, uh, that information were provided. I'm wondering why, um, that information isn't provided.
Uh, current practice, uh, through the CEO, current practice, we haven't, um, we do that, um, we do a cross check through the criteria process around public liability and the, and the board and, and, and the. Not-for-profit status and the like, but if you wanted an additional compo, component in the report, that's no problem, we can, we can start doing that if that's the preference of the council. Um, and, because to your point, that would make it very much clearer, um, and so I'm happy to do that.
Thanks, I'd, I'd appreciate that, um, and, uh, I'm, I'm sorry to find, um, ambiguities or discrepancies. Um, but I do have a question, some, uh, grants. Refer to amount requested and they provide a dollar figure, so for argument's sake, Street Industries Incorporated, uh, requested fifteen thousand dollars. The total cost of the project is thirty thousand seven hundred and six, that's on page eighty-four. Um, on, over the following page, um, it, the applicant, uh, is stated there, the amount requested is stated. And then the box next to it is also amount requested, um, what's the amount that's requested for that organisation, is that a typo?
Uh, thank you, through the CEO, um, no, uh, what is, is, is the amount requested is based, it, sorry, the amount that we can give is based on the policy provision. And the, the amount requested is the cost of the project, so if the cost of the project was forty thousand, and the policy states we can do up to ten thousand, that's the allocation that we give. But it, again, um, noting new councillor and, and some feedback, that's actually quite valid, we could say the project cost in total instead of amount requested, it might make it clearer, um, for the council.
I think the, the, the problem.
It's a typo.
Oh, okay, all right.
Full stop, it's a typo, the, the correct one appears on eighty, eighty-four, where amount requested against total project costs, that should be replicated on each of the other.
Ah, right, okay, I, I was just, yeah, I thought maybe that it was the case that it was a staged grant or they, okay, all right, um. Uh, that, that were all the, the questions I had about those, but thank you for answering them so comprehensively.
Councillor, you could, you could have going forward, you can potentially have the actual, I don't know if they're actually on here, um, I don't think they are, but the, the actual applications. Sitting behind these, if you really wanted to read them more, and want another fifty pages to read.
That's, um, it's, well, it, the option would be, um, much appreciated, yeah, if we could see those and possibly a list of. Everyone who applied, not necessarily their entire application, but other organisations who applied. Um, and, uh, I'm sure this is in the, uh, eligibility guidelines, but when these grants were published or made, uh, made available to the public, when people could. Um, submit applications, would be, would be helpful, I think, in, in these reports going forward.
Seeing the CEO is happy with that? Cool, okay, any further discussion?
Yes, I've just got a very brief question, just for, um, the director. In terms of.
Through the CEO.
Sorry, through the CEO, um, thanks Mister Mayor, um, in terms of the allocation of these grants. Do they come before council as an, as an application? Is there, for example, a number that exceeds the ones, I presume, in the report that come before, uh, your directorate? And then is there a process, and if so, what is the process of selecting the ones that come before the council? So how many, for example, is there sixty and we pick six, is there, yes?
Thank you, through the CEO, no, um, uh, good question, uh, the question, the, the applicants come through a, a system called flux. So everyone's reviewed individually on merit and based on the criteria of the, each of the, um, the, the various grants. So no one's really, um, pushed back unless they don't meet the criteria, but then my officer, Javaria, works very closely with them to meet those obligations. Um, where the challenges often are is if they don't have, uh, a public liability or, uh, or, or not-for-profit status, um, and we have to get an albus. Someone to albus their grant, so we try to work really hard at getting everybody, um, eligible, um, because it's such a meaningful programme for, for the community.
Thank you for the comprehensive answer, Tina, thank you very much.
If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, declare it unanimous. Next item we have is, um, investment report, corp zero one, August two thousand and twenty-four, page ninety-two, tab six. And the recommendation on page ninety-three, move deputy mayor.
Just a quick question.
Just once, yeah, seconded, do we have a seconder? Councillor Green, um. Uh, I'm assuming you don't want to speak for your motion, councillor Restevsky question?
I just have a question, um, it says council's investment advisor, is that an internal or an external advisor?
Through the CEO.
Thank you, thank you councillor, I'll just refer to the CFO.
Through the CEO, um, it's an external advisor.
Any other further discussion? Count, deputy mayor?
Anything works? Just a general comment, looking at the, the finances, congratulations to the financial department. When you look at the difference between the pen, benchmark and the portfolio yield, that's, that's very good, actually, I'm impressed, thank you.
Thank you, through the CEO, thank you councillor, actually, we should be performing much above the benchmark. The reason why it's there now, because when the cash rates were quite low, we, we invested for, for a little bit longer terms. And then we are still having those low returns coming through, once they mature, then our performance will be much higher than the benchmark, thank you.
Up, no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Next item is corp zero two, New South Wales Grants Commission Financial Assistance Grants Policy, page one oh two, tab seven, with a recommendation on page one oh two. Moved councillor Green, second and deputy mayor, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Next item is corp zero three, annual financial reports, two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four. Page one twenty-five, tab eight, with a recommendation on page one hundred and twenty-five.
I move a motion that we defer this item, um, on the basis that we just got given this today. And, um, it just seems strange that we, we, we've been presented with it today as the first option. And then we need to sign and then adopt it at a second meeting. It's, uh, given the fact that we've got a lot of new councillors and the report is quite thick, I'd like at least, you know, a bit of time to review it.
Um, I just need to check with the legality of that, councillor Restevsky, if I can refer to the, uh, the CEO.
I'm going to refer it to, um, Director Corporate Support, but we have got some legislative timeframes in relation to service delivery. Again, the, the, the sequencing, obviously this report is a financial report that is concluded in July, it's part, it's post tense. We, the numbers are the numbers, they're audited numbers now, and we have to submit, I think, by the thirtieth of October, but I'll refer to the director.
Thank you, CEO, um, councillors, basically, um. We, we have provided a budget and report against that with actuals, at least on a quarterly basis. So you have been the, well, not this council, because you've just started, um, but previous count, the previous council were getting updates of, um, our results. On a quarterly basis, so they had three, three, three quarterly, uh, reviews. This in es, in essence is the fourth quarter, the final review, um, and the, the process is, I mean, there is a due date to get to the Office of Local Government by the thirty-first of October. Um, this is to, uh, the, as it's, as it is the financial reports, it's past results. So it's not like council can change anything in here, uh, it's for you to note how the council performed in terms of its financial performance for the year. So if council adopts this and signs it off, which is typical, typically the case right across New South Wales. Uh, it has been audited, and we had the auditors here this, this afternoon, uh, it will be referred to the Office of Local Government. And then at the next council meeting, uh, you will have the, you will then be able, in a position to review, uh, and ask questions and discuss as, as you wish.
No, that, that's fine, I think, um, I, I think it would have been nice if we got them at least on the, um, induction day. Um, except today, just to get it first thing is just a bit difficult to comment on it.
Uh, just one other thing, the, the report has gone through Eric, uh, we only just, as the, as the auditors indicated, uh, completed the reports only recently. So that's why you didn't get them earlier, uh, plus the fact that obviously this is your first meeting of the council, uh, so they were briefed, um. So they were briefed before before it went to the auditors, the financial statements, the draft financial statements before it went to the auditors, and they were briefed last Friday after the, they'd been finalised and audited, so this is the first opportunity for us.
Well, technically, you can defer, but you'll have to have a council meeting to allow, this has to get deferred backwards, it has to get to, oh, it has to get to the OLG by the thirty-first of October, it's going to have seven days exhibition prior to that, so therefore you'd have to have a council meeting to adopt on, you know, twenty twenty-second, twenty-third, oh, give yourself a day. All right, cool. Yeah, so, okay, on that note, then, all right, I'm happy to, I'm happy to move this motion. Seconder, seconded councillor Green. Any further discussion? You know, you 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 may want to just just consider this as a point five that we write to the OLG asking that after an election to at least give new councils an extra month, because I think we're not the only council who's involved in this, and it's good practice because people, we haven't, no one has gone through that. So if people, so if we can add a point five, the seconder would be happy with it, saying that we write to the OLG saying, you know, after an election, the councils be given an extra, an extra month extension to allow the new council to familiarise themselves with the report. Or words to that effect. So CEO.
Just on the general theme and councillor's question, we we, the staff actively encourage with quarterly reviews, happy to add some more frequency and have a really robust discussion and examination of this. They are big numbers and it's always important, and we won't shy away from having additional or longer periods of time where we can go through budget estimates and forecasts and see what kind of fluctuations and take the advice of council.
If you can add to the end of that as a standard practice for all councils. If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare it carried. Okay, next item is Operation Zero One, Brickmakers Creek Expansion of Project Site, page one hundred and twenty-eight, tab nine, recommendation on page one hundred and twenty-eight. Deputy Mayor.
I would like that deferred on the basis that we've got new councillors here who would not know what that implies. So if we can do that, I'd appreciate that.
Differ for a briefing?
Yes.
Yeah, you say defer.
I'll second that.
Seconded councillor Kearney, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare it unanimous. I should, I should have asked, is there any particularly issue with deferring it? I'm sorry.
Thank you through the chair. Nothing material, only where all these, this is a WISIG project or West Invest project, so when we when we consider deferrals, we are up against tight established programmes and some of the funding is conditional on meeting project milestones. This this won't have a material effect, it was really just grabbing a bit more of Brickmakers Creek, but I think what the deputy mayor is certainly cognisant of is the water treatment therein, so.
I'm pretty sure there's no big pipe or culvert that can deal with the amount of water that goes through there. I'll be seen to be corrected. No, no, we'll leave that till next time. All right, wonderful, okay, so that's good, okay, so that will stand. Next item is Operations Zero Two, twenty-three, twenty-four, Capital Works Carryover of Projects, page one hundred and thirty-three, tab ten, with the recommendation on page one hundred and thirty-three.
I have a few questions.
Yeah, can we move a motion first before we go on to questions?
I'm I'm happy to move the motion for the sake of discussion.
Move that deferred, do you have a seconder? Seconded councillor Stevsky. Is there any implications in deferring? Is this a receiving? First, well, the thing, the motion's deferral, but yes, well, let's go to questions, councillor Harrow. Unless you want to speak for your-
No, there's no, no motion to defer.
Huh? No, no, there's a motion to defer, moved by councillor Monahan.
Oh, sorry, sorry. My bad.
Defer with a briefing, if that can be provided.
Yeah, sure. Will the briefing satisfy the question?
I'm happy to raise the necessary questions at the briefing sessions.
Yep, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it carried. Councillors, I want to call a comfort break and we can return back here at six P M. I declare the meeting adjourned till then. Thank you. Next item we have, is everyone here, is committee reports, they're only being one, C T T E zero one, minutes of the local Liverpool Local Traffic Committee, eighteenth of September, page one forty, tab recommendation on the page of one forty. Move Deputy Mayor, seconded councillor Green, question?
Can I have a question? I note on, I think not in these minutes, but in previous minutes, there was a resolution that council endorsed for Memorial, Maryvale Avenue to be, had the same time limitations as Memorial Avenue, and the the signage and everything was supposed to be up, and I note that that has not occurred, so could, you know, could that please be addressed, please?
Yeah, could we add that, so like, basically an update on the left-hand restriction on Maryvale Avenue?
Yeah, yeah, it is consistent with the same time restrictions as Memorial.
Yeah, so is that, is, sorry, excuse me, is Maryvale in the report, are you saying it's not in the minutes?
It's not in this report, but I note that it was, we we have endorsed it, council has endorsed it in previous minutes, but the change, the signage has not gone up on Maryvale to advise that there are now time restrictions on left-hand turn. Because what you, what happened was, was happening was that while drivers could not turn left into Memorial in the morning, they would then turn left into Maryvale to continue the rat run, to avoid the lights on Flowerdale Road. Yep, happy to, yeah, but I'm just raising it as something that has been a miss, that's all.
Just make sure when that does come into place that it's very highly advertised, please.
Through you, Mayor, as well, the closure of Grove Street, we're still-
That's done, isn't it?
No.
It's done in July, June?
If we can get an update on that, I've repeatedly asked questions and gone back to people that assured me that it'll be done in three weeks, showed me that it'll be done in five weeks, still not done.
I don't know if this is the, this is the correct forum, so please advise me if I'm out of order, Mr. Mayor, but I I note the current problem, an ongoing problem with Lismore Street, and what I'm, what I would be proposing is, it would seem that one remedy in one, in an isolated context, has has then flowed on for, to, I guess, to create a bigger problem. So I'm wondering if we might have been better to have had a traffic management study on that precinct, so that you're looking at the whole precinct holistically, as to then you get a sense of, well, if we do that, what is the overflow for that, what, you know, what are the consequences? So I'm, I'm just wondering, given that it's a, it's a hot issue in the community at the moment, and I can't recall off the top of my head when the first traffic committee is, but it would seem that residents would be, would welcome some kind of of relief, and I know that people are talking about, well, let's just open up First Avenue, but that's going to, that will cause a whole lot of angst to other residents, so that's why I'm saying that that maybe the whole, that that whole area needs to be looked at as a precinct. And a traffic management study might be a really good way of understanding what the traffic flow is, problems are, where the bottlenecks are, and why people, you know, where where the the particular rat runs and whatever are. That was the suggestion.
Yes, and I think Deputy Mayor, you mentioned an extension of a road, what was the name of the road? Basically runs parallel to Croodong Road, which needs another bridge, which is-
Yes, it's Y A R A W, Y A double R A W. Anyway, it's the one that goes, it's supposed to go across the creek and then marry up with the roundabout that allows you to go to the M seven. That has been planned for a long time, but you're looking at a bridge, and you're looking at twenty million dollars to put that bridge across there. And when you say, when you say about the traffic study, the traffic study was done in around two thousand and eight, I remember, and that Nineteenth Avenue and First Avenue were connected, and it was realised early in the piece that that would generate an enormous rat run. That's why First Avenue has got the cul-de-sac at the end of it. And we were now talking in the traffic committee about doing a one-way run, and one way, well, what will happen is, that'll eliminate or alleviate the, some of the traffic in Lismore Street, but is it going to be in the morning or in the afternoon?
And it's a bus route as well. And that's why I'm saying, that really, it's about looking, looking at the area as a precinct, and and I appreciate through the chair, my colleague, Deputy Mayor's additional information that the traffic study was done in two thousand and eight, but we're now in in two thousand and twenty-four and maybe things have changed. I'm not just some people saying that part of the problem is the, with this, that there may have, should have, may have been or was promised a bypass road when the the private school was, was, was built there, so that's why I'm saying, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a tricky problem at the moment, but it seems that looking at things in isolation has, you know, will only, will, what's the word? Impact, it may impact further on on the residents, so maybe as a precinct, you know, traffic stud, that particular traffic study could provide some really good information for council so that we can make some quality and informed decisions.
All right, so I think we get it, so we get the one, two, point three, conduct a, a traffic management, traffic, a traffic study for the area around Lismore Street.
The precinct around, the precinct around Lismore Street.
We need money for it.
Budget?
Let's get a, can we get, get a report to conduct a traffic, get a report? I think, yeah. And be brought back to council.
Mr. Mayor, could you include that they look at that bridge that was proposed?
Yes. Including, comma, including the bridge. I'm not going to try to spell Yarrawarra. Well, someone else is brave enough? No, that's all right. Okay, there you go, thank you. Wonderful, okay. Everyone happy with that?
Yes.
Wonderful, okay, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare it carried. We now have addendum Book Four, Corp zero four, Recruitment of CEO, page fifty-three, fifty-nine, recommendation on page fifty-nine, councillor McNaught.
I'm happy to move with a slight amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
My amendment-
It's part of, it's a motion, it's not an amendment.
Sorry, I'd like to move a motion, which is as per the book, with some changes at point five. I'll just read them for the typist and then we can look through. So at point five, establish a selection panel and then insert the words, which is to be made up of all councillors. And then, in brackets, with a minimum attendance at each task, being the OLG recommendation of Mayor, comma, Deputy Mayor, comma, one other councillor, and an independent member, close brackets. And then at point five D, I would like to change the end of that point after the comma, so it should read, with guidance from the appointed independent consultant, prepare a report to the council that provides a detailed assessment of the interviewed candidates and invite, delete the rest and write, and invite the top candidates to present to council prior to the final decision to appoint.
Do you have a second for your motion?
I hope so.
Seconded councillor Hart. Any discussion?
I I have a, another motion, is that a foreshadowed motion or?
Depends what the motion is.
To defer it to the next meeting.
That would be, that would be a foreshadowed motion.
I'd be happy to second that.
Foreshadowed, yeah.
Yep. Do I need more reasons?
No, we can't, we have to, we, we have to talk, we have to talk about these substantial motions first before, speaking against the motion, you can give your reasons. Councillor McNaught, just speak for your motion.
I'd like to speak for my motion, but can I just ask a question before I start to speak? I'd like to ask through the acting CEO about the possible timelines involved in this recruitment process moving forward.
I think the Head of People and Culture and also Director of Corporate Services has done some work on timelines, so I'll just refer over to Mr. Portelli for that information.
Through you, the CEO. Councillor, there are a number of processes, obviously, that need to be, take, we need to go through to fulfil the position of the CEO. I guess, in in the shortest possible time, I mean, it is possible to get it done by the end of this year, but potentially it could go into February next year. If the council approved the process tonight, basically tomorrow, we would be going out- looking to get, um, getting, um, quotes from half a dozen, uh, providers. Uh, that would be open for a week. Uh, basically after that, um, and there will be a a section panel, uh, to review those, um, uh, submissions once they come in. They could probably be reviewed the day after that that week. Um, once then the, uh, the project will be awarded to the successful external, um, provider. Um, the of the a- the agency that is successful, well, then we'd be talking with them in terms of the, uh, the advertising period. And, uh, obviously the council will be involved in that. And in this case, with your motion, the whole council will be advised, uh, in that process. Um, there will be a, a, uh, an agency pack, basically an information pack that would be prepared, so that be, but made available to all candidates who make that, make application. Uh, then that would follow a process of shortlisting. Um, typically, the external will provide the council with a a short, recommended shortlist for them to review. They can, of course, add or subtract to that shortlist. Um, uh, there would be a process, once that's done, to to verify, um, uh, the candidates. There'd be, there'd be checks in terms of criminal checks, um, perhaps qualification checks and the like, um, and reference checks. Um, then there would be a process of conducting interviews, um, with that shortlist. Um, there may be, there may be a situation where, uh, obviously there'll be reference checking, there might be a psychological test, uh, that's given to them to get their their profile, uh, psychological profile. Um, depending on the outcome of the first interview, council may wish to conduct a second interview, uh, or unless they they are happy with the candidate that they prefer. Uh, if if a second interview's, uh, required, then obviously that will have to be arranged. Um, and given your your motion, a presentation made, I mean, that may be at the first interview or at the second interview. So if you had a shortlist of of six, for example, um, and then you, it was, you couldn't decide between, say, two, the two best candidates, you, they might come for the second interview and you may have them do a presentation at the second interview. Um, and then, uh, council would make a decision. There would be some, obviously, some, uh, contract negotiation done with the preferred applicant. Um, but that's, that process, again, I guess if it's, if everything moved quickly, if if, you know, it potentially could get done by the end of December before council, uh, or probably after council's last meeting, uh, but by the end of the month, if council's willing to get together to con- to process this. Uh, alternatively, it probably would go into, um, you know, January's a pretty quick dead time, probably into February. Does that answer the question?
Thank you, it does. Thank you very much. Happy to speak for my motion. Yeah. Um, so, um, thank you for for bringing this today. Um, I think i- it's a new council term and and moving forward, one of the biggest things that the organisation is after is continued stability. Um, and I think the process that's just been explained to us is a, is a rigorous process that we'll go through, um, to to, um, select the best candidate that we can to permanently put in as our, uh, CEO. Um, and, uh, from my memory, we've, we've had, um, an acting CEO for around about six months now and even on a conservative timeline. This recruitment process, if we're saying February, so maybe the first meeting of the new year, um, will will be completed within the 12 months that we had, um, initially put the acting CEO role for. So I'm really pleased that we'll be able to offer that permanent stability within that 12-month period. Um, I think that the explanation of my changes to what we, what is recommended by the, um, OLG is so that we're all there, we all have the opportunity be, to be there for every step of the process. So nobody misses out on hearing anything that everybody else hears as well when we go through that, um, rigorous recruitment process. Um, I'm looking forward to being able to, um, you know, demonstrate the 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 leadership and the stability for the rest of the council and for us moving forward as a new council. So I implore people to support this motion.
And just before further discussion, I just want to note that point seven, if we go down a little bit, that needs to be amended because we need to appoint a, uh, a, um, performance review panel immediately, even though we have an acting CEO, because there are KPIs that are in place. So it's not about, we need, we need to do that, uh, regardless of deferral or regardless of, um, adoption of this, that needs to be put in place. There's a, there was a report that was done, which is not available, or can't find it on the website anymore, that talked about council and not having a, uh, having, uh, the KPIs and so on, since in place. So, um, I'll point that, point that out there. Yeah.
So do we need to amend point seven at the moment to say that we?
Yes, I would strongly, I would strongly recommend it. You know, it would be along the lines of establishing a performance review panel. Um, and you can adopt, you can adopt the recommendation in the gu- the OLG guidelines. The guidelines.
I was going to say from memory, that's.
For the appointment of oversight. No, don't you have to remember, I have it in front of me.
Ah, okay.
All right. Um, one of my mini folders. So the, um, the performance review panel should consist of the mayor, the deputy mayor, another councillor nominated by council, and a councillor nominated by the general manager, uh, and if you, and an independent observer. So if you, if you adopted that, that would be myself, deputy mayor, then you'd want to get some gender balance on there. I would recommend two female councillors, but, you mean, and then, or, and then, no, you can, yeah, anyway, then go into more detail, but yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I've got a question.
Yep, just before you do that, are you happy with that councillor? No, sorry, councillor McNair.
So I'm just, just understanding whether we, so we need to establish that panel now independent of this.
Correct.
The, so I just think we should remove the words then for the new chief executive officer and just put a full stop.
Yep. Yeah, you basically say establish a performance review panel consisting in in line with the OLG guidelines immediately. Yep, sorry, I'll get to you in a moment. Councillor Hart.
Uh, thank you. Um, this is a question probably for the director. Um, is there any prescriptions or any provisions in the Local Government Act for how long an acting CEO can serve in that position?
Four months.
So if we're talking about February 2025, um, and if we're going to defer this for another meeting in a month, that's getting pretty close to the, uh, maximum time limit that's, uh, provided. Yes.
Okay. Councillor Green.
Uh, I was be, um, speaking against the motion, uh, only because of the number of new councillors that are on council at the moment. The fact that if we can have a briefing on, on, based on the re- the, uh, recruitment and oversight of the CEO, so that everybody understands, uh, what that that whole process is. And I I appreciate some of the, um, the points that have been included by, um, councillor McNair. I also note that there are three parts in terms of of appointments in this this motion. Number three, you're engaging an independent consultant to assist in the recruitment process. And then point four, we're engaging an independent prob- probity advisor. So those appointments also need to be to be put in place as well. So, um, I'm just saying from, from a position of that everybody understands the process, uh, so that they can fully participate in like a whole of council. I don't have a problem with a whole of council. I think that that is probably a, a, a good step, so that everybody is on the one page. But I think it's, it's really important, uh, in this particular instance, that at least that we, everyone is clear on on what that, what the process is and what their responsibilities are.
Yep. Uh, and councillor, can I, if I can just say to that, I agree 100%. Um, the, and I'm just mindful of the amount of briefings that we're, uh, that that we're getting there. Um, there's a nine, there's an OLG document. Yeah, nineteen, it's nineteen, twenty, twenty pages, which I think would be, it might be easier for people to digest in their own, like, as, as part of this process, we would all get training of how to go about it, what to do. So it's, I think it's part of it. And you'd have, for consistency, whoever, correct me if I'm wrong, but whoever, um, is appointed to run that process would run the training as part of that process. So I guess you're being, you're being told one thing and it's consistent versus one person says this and, oh, no, it's a little bit different. So that would happen as part of the process. Councillor, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, just a question on that. Having been around and seen quite a few of these, uh, I do believe that we should get some training. I think we've got five new councillors who really don't under, I, well, sorry, I don't mean to conclude that you don't, you have, may not have been through this process. But look, if time is such an issue, you know, I I mean, the next meeting is what, a month away? There's nothing, I can't see any problem by having an extraordinary meeting, say in two weeks' time, have a briefing session prior to that and then have an extraordinary meeting just for this, if that's what you want to do. Uh, I can't see a problem with that. I do believe in all the points that councillor McNair raised, I think that's great, I've seen this before. I think the office of local government ought to be involved with this, uh, and and in fact, they run training sessions on this. They, I think they're the ones that we should ask to explain this process. I think it would benefit all those new councillors who haven't gone through this process. So I don't think we really ought to make a decision on this today, but I'm happy to say, let's have an extraordinary meeting in a week or whenever it's convenient to you, a month, I think. The next council meeting, I think, is too far away, but I think we could call something in between. I think that might be a worthwhile compromise.
So on that note, that's fair enough.
I just wanted to ask a question and I definitely take all of that on board, um, through the acting CEO to the director. Um, so with those steps that you laid out, some of those could continue or could move forward, um, while we do this briefing and education. So because obviously one step has to happen before the others anyway. So if we have that lead time of finding the independent, um, person, you you mentioned six, I'm not certain of the process, six, um, people and then figuring out who that's going to be, I imagine there is some timeframe attached to that, which may be two weeks or more. And in that case, we could, we could fit into that timeline anyway, these sessions. Is that doable?
Yeah, if I, I'll, if I can make comment on that, you're effectively saying, can we walk and chew gum at the same time? You know, so we can, they can start a process with regards to getting, getting someone, which takes, I think that was mentioned, um, uh, to procure someone. And I think the message is to ensure there is a training programme as part of that. Um, yeah, so that can, that can continue on, that can happen.
I think we're, we're establishing or enabling the operational component of this process and then we can figure ourselves out in the next couple of weeks, I suppose.
Yeah. Yeah, and I guess if we do come back, what are we doing to come back? And I will flag from now with, uh, 24 minutes left to go, that, um, we're probably going to have to adjourn this meeting at seven o'clock and come back to conclude the agenda. So, uh, I'll flag that, number one. Number two, just from my hearings with regards to council and the intent to defer that and the things, uh, a discussion about having an extraordinary meeting to do that or providing a delegation to actually deal with that matter, uh, mindful of missing the Christmas and advertising over Christmas and all those complicated issues. So I, you know, we could be coming back for an extraordinary meeting if you wanted to deal with that in a couple of weeks' time. Um, but I I I'm assuming that's all, we wouldn't have much more time than that. Um, but I think there's a valid point to councillor Hart, to everyone's, is get the ball rolling, because if we're going to train, who are we going to train? I guess the number one, the number one point is, is i- i- is, do we start the process with regards to procuring someone? Does that, you mean, to do training and to run the process? Can we move up a little bit, please? Yeah, point three, right? So we, we start that, you mean? And once again, you would point four.
I, I think it's two separate matters, uh, because you're advertising, because from what I heard, you need to advertise, you need to give it a time to find the right people to apply for the job.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, deputy mayor is saying that we need to be equipped and being trained. So they're two separate matters. So while the training is going on, the advertisement is going on. So we don't waste time, you know? Time is crucial.
Yeah. Could, could, just wondering if I could get comment from the CEO, maybe through the head of, uh, people and culture or just regarding, uh, this, if that's all right for CEO?
Button, there we go. Thank you. Craig Nappick, the chief people officer. So in terms of timing.
Just one moment, Mr. Nappick, if I can.
Yes.
Just so everyone can.
Uh, addressing that question, you're exactly right. There are two separate processes. There's your involvement in the selection of an appropriate candidate, uh, to fulfil this role. And then there's the operational components of ensuring that we have a recruiting agency to assist us through this process. And then obviously a probity advisor to make sure that everything is compliant with the Local Government Act and OLG guidelines and our own recruitment and selection policy as well. Uh, so usually during a, um, search period, which involves advertising and also the recruiting agency doing their own search, which is common practice these days, it's a little bit of a dead time for those who are actually doing the selection process. So during that time, we could very much do the training of yourselves during that period of time whilst we're doing the advertising. So we can kick off the selection of a recruiting agency through an RFQ process tomorrow, find that particular recruiting agency in a week and a half's time. And then whilst they're doing the advertising and search process, which we're suggesting is, say, three weeks' period, during that time, we can do the training of people, make sure that people fully understand how you do appropriate, um, assessment, validation, verica- verification of this very important decision to get the right person for the role. I hope that assists council.
That was the question, that answers the question I had before.
Um, I've got a question.
Yes.
Uh, we, we seem to be hung up on February and April, but in the executive summary provided here, it says council later on 29 May 2024 extended, uh, the acting CEO's appointment for a period of up to 12 months. Do I take that to mean, um, uh, Mr. Acting CEO, that that concludes on the 29th of May 2024? So we've got, in fact, more time.
Twenty twenty five.
Uh, 2025, yes, sorry, I missed draw that. Um, so we would have more time to carry out that process, would we not?
I think, sorry, uh, through the chair, I think it was, uh, the extension was the res, but the 12 months started in April. Uh, on the April council meeting, actually, if I remember rightly. So i- it is 24th of April, 2025.
If I could just comment through the chair on that particular matter, um, in relation to timing, whilst there may seem a lot of time, um, can I suggest that, uh, given my experience in recruitment industry, that inevitably there are problems that happen along the way in whether we actually are happy with the candidates that we may get through the agency, um, that whether people are available, given that we are asking all of council to attend to interview people. And then there's the actual negotiation phase with the individual and then giving appropriate notice to where they may be employed presently. So the time will actually disappear faster than we may suspect.
And councillor Monahan, on your, on your question, so it's another element of potential ambiguity in that, you know, i- in April, we had a CEO who was on leave, but in May we didn't have it. So you could argue, you could go cautious and say it's from April. So you could argue, you could go cautious and say it's from April or you could say, well, that first, from April to May, it was just while he was on leave and then actually was appointed from that, from, appointed for 12 months.
Yeah, and look, that's just why I was asking for that clarification, because it just, it does read that it was extended and for a period of up to 12 months. So I mean, that could be, well, that could mean one month, it could mean two months. That's why I was just asking, that's all.
And then we have the issue, the other obligation we as council have is that we need to resolve an organisational structure within 12 months. I don't know if it's of the election or declaration of polls, because that's another month in there. And any, any structure, hmm, gonna be lawyers on this one. Um, but any structure will need a lot of consultation period. So, you know, you're, you're running out of space to do that. And I think it's very important because you've got to say when somebody starts, by the time they get their head around what's going on, who, what, where, when, what is the right structure? You imagine, you'd imagine that's got to be at least two to three months. And you know, the briefings that come to council on that, um to take us along the journey, you know, you're, you know, and then you then need to consult with union staff, so on and so forth. So there is a bit of, when you put that overlay onto what I think time is, is getting of the essence. Christmas break, yeah, yeah, Christmas break. So.
Taking all of, all of that on board, and I, I'm still, I still think that all of that fits into the, the motion that we have in front of us. Can I just ask that you move the motion down a little bit so I can just have a look at the top part of it? Thank you. One, two, three, four, thank you, five, six, thank you. And then maybe we can have a point eight, if, if it helps the um to, to uh cover everything, that um concurrently, that concurrently um staff engage the OLG or other organisation to provide training regarding the recruitment of CEOs.
To the CEO, yeah.
Just get, thank you, councillor, just get some advice from the director of corporate services.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, CEO, through the CEO, um that can be done as part of the request for quote for the successful agency. So they can do that training in, in that dead period that was mentioned by the chief people officer. So they can do that.
Okay, if we can cover that off anyway, then there's probably no need for point eight, sorry, sorry, typist, thank you. Thank you.
Councillor AJ?
Yeah, so I, I believe go back to my point that I made earlier. Um, look, we, we, we are amazing team, you know, I think this team is, is the, the, the dream team for Liverpool. So with the question that was even coming today with the lawyers and other people, if we have a CEO uh in front of us and we are questioning that person, um we'll get the best person to lead us um in, in this chamber. So I believe that if we can give them the permission to start the process and also to be able to train on their side as well. Because most of us here, I believe, has gone through a job interview, has applied for a job before, um the process of recruitment and stuff like that. So we have an idea, but maybe applying for a CEO role, we need a bit of like guidance and all that and what questions to ask. Um, I don't think it's any hard job, because we will have the person who is qualified for the job and we will read his resume and see that they are the right person for the job. So to my opinion, we should give them the go ahead and start the process.
Councillor, deputy, did. Who's councillor Stevsky?
Okay, um I, I just want to speak against uh the motion. Um, look, even the motion itself is quite complex. Um, fifty percent of the councillors are, are new. We've got to get it right. We've been through, I don't know, so many CEOs in, in X amount of years. The um, in, in my mind, this definitely can't be rushed. If we need to call an extraordinary meeting, then let's do that. But even the motion itself is, is very complex. And I think it should be benched and deferred until everyone has an opportunity to, to digest it and get the advice regarding this motion from the relevant council offices.
Yeah, so which part of it is the, is the complex part? And I understand your point, just so the officers can be, if we can just, if we can just go through it.
Well, there's no need to go through it now. That's why I'm saying we need to defer it, because that's the whole point of me deferring it. It's not to go through it now, but to defer it to another meeting.
Yeah, but I, I guess when we come back, what are, just so the staff are prepared, what are the things you'd like them to cover, to cover off?
Look, I, I can't uh name something at the moment, because I know half the councillors are new, so I can't speak on their behalf. But it is quite detailed in the process. We, we've got to make sure that, especially point five. I mean, it's great to have everyone on there, but why wasn't that followed last council term? You know, there's, there's no consistency.
Sorry, councillor, can I, do you?
Uh, look, I, um, I, through the, through the me, um, I agree with councillor Stevsky. I think that um with respect, we got declared on Friday evening. We've had the induction yesterday and today's the first council meeting. I'd, I'd like a little bit more than three days to consider something that's, that's very crucially important. And the amount of CEOs that have come through, I just, there's a number of points there. There's some, it's, it's six fifty, the meeting's going to finish at seven PM and even, and, and other things will get deferred. I think, like deputy mayor Howes said earlier, I think there's no issue with calling an extraordinary meeting purely on this issue. So it doesn't go for too long. Um, but just time to consider uh this um on another day apart from today. It would be advantageous for at least myself as a new councillor. That's my position.
How much, how much time would you think is, because we, we've got to, we've got to adjourn, we've got to adjourn the meeting because we're not finishing the agenda. So we've got to come back, generally speaking, we'd come back tomorrow, but I'm mindful of people have work and, but pardon?
Sorry, suggest a week, next Wednesday. That gives the, that gives a weekend to think about it and, and digest what's needed. Uh, just while I'm speaking, issues that I would like addressed if we're picking a new CEO. What uh, what, sorry, what does that CEO have to do? What is that CEO responsible for in terms of our LGA? You know, what, what do you expect of that person? Do you want somebody who is politically orientated? I hate to say it like that, but that's basically, you could take that view. Or do we want someone that has had experience in running a council? For instance, uh if you had gone through the Local Government Association of New South Wales, which we did for the previous appointment, the, the, the candidates in that were primarily people who had worked in councils before. I think there were seventeen altogether. And I, when I say worked in council, some of them worked on the waterboard, but they worked within government departments who knew the system reasonably well. I personally would be looking at that as a criteria. You know, if, have they managed a similar sized council to Liverpool, knows what's involved? And there's some of the issues that I would be looking at personally.
Yeah, so deputy mayor, that's, I guess, the next step of the process, which is where we need to be focusing our time. Ultimately, going back to it, there's, there's a, there's a timeline, you know. You've got to go out there and say, let's start procuring someone. I don't see if there's, I don't see how anyone would have an issue with that. That's just a procurement process. Um, and secondly, you've got to, if they're going to run training, you've got to say, well, who is on the panel? And I think if as long as we can resolve that, that's, that, get that going, then we can, then they can commence the training and we can go through all that sort of stuff. So my view is if we can resolve those two points, and obviously then the, the point that I brought up before, but the point seven, I think it is, the performance review panel, um just so we're compliant. That's what to me is relevant. And then everything else, if you want to defer, we can defer that. There's no issue with that. Are, are you happy with that, councillor McNort?
I'm, I'm happy to get the process started, yeah. Because I, I, I'm mindful of what the, the chief people officer was saying, is that there is a fair bit of dead time in the middle. I'm also mindful of what he says, that time runs out before you realise it. So if we could get that ball rolling and then even if that period in the middle extends a little bit, that, that the um director was going through before, we have that time if we start the process now to, to resolve that.
Sorry to cut you off. So if we sat there and remove, if we sat there and just go, if you just look for a moment, if you then removed, um go up a little bit, please, if you can. Um, uh, once again, point one is just saying it. Point two um is undertake competitive process. Yep, that's the, point three engages, so we can solve, that's the procurement process. Point four is a procurement process. Um, the panel, you said, you mentioned, the panel is the panel, so they know how many people to train, so they can procure accordingly. Um, work with the, you can remove, yeah, you can remove A, B, C, D and deal with them later on. Um, point six is just noting, and then point seven, as I said, is the relevant one. So if we remove point A, B and C and D, can we at least then get started with the procurement process?
I'm happy with that. We can tease those out as, as the time goes through.
Is the second a happy with that? Councillor, does that satisfy that we can defer the other points? All right, so I'll put, I'll put the motion forward. Um, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against and declare carried. Next item we have is Operation Zero Three, page three sixty-three in book four, Khan's Hill Aquatic and Recreation Centre, amended master plan design.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move a motion.
Yes, councillor.
Um, I would like to move that this item is deferred for a, for a detailed councillor briefing session.
Is that the general will? Secondary, so move councillor Har, second councillor Monahan?
Just before, I've got a second point to my motion. Um, and it is to ask council staff to take, uh, take on notice the following. And I've just got a couple of questions and councillors, if you have any questions.
Mindful, mindful of time, that could be thrown in there. Just one, putting this to the November twentieth meeting is challenging. When, when, so we get, there's two ways of doing this. We have the briefing session, we've got Tuesday where we have our committee day and we'll have a whole bunch of briefings about infrastructure and all that, everyone, it's in everyone's diary. Um, we can deal with it then, go through it. And then you can either have an extraordinary meeting to come back and deal with it or we can provide delegation to the committee to send it off, right? Which is efficient way of doing it after we've had the briefing. And the committee consists of all council, so we can do that.
Do you mind repeating that, Mr. Mayor?
So we um, we defer for a briefing and go through it in depth and detail. Mindful of time, because we can't, we have to go back on exhibition and you can't do that over Christmas. And then we lose significant amount of days. So we can either have the briefing, which I'm proposing we do on Tuesday. I'm, I'm happy if people are happy with that date, speak now sort of for your piece. But we have basically, whatever, we have that briefing, if it's Tuesday or another day. And then from that point, we can either come back and have a council meeting to adopt whatever we want to as the collective, or we can adopt it if we use, say, for example, the governance committee and give it a delegation to move on, which means we don't have to call another council meeting just to make it move.
And I guess in the interest of time, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, no, no, you're speaking.
In the interest of time, we could email questions to staff prior to that um briefing session. Does that suit?
Does that work with everyone? Right? So, yeah, everyone ask their questions, please, as much as we can. All right, so if we can, we do that and we just defer to that and delegate to the governance committee to resolve the matter. I'm with you, I'm with you. Yep.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I believe there's a separate briefing's been placed in the diary as a hold for this um, for this briefing, um outside of the governance, so it could be done um exped- expediated.
All right, all right. Well, can we, can we deal with, can we, can we put it on the agenda for Tuesday and deal with it?
So, so sorry, Mr. Mayor, through the chair. I just wanted to uh point out that the governance committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, the 12th of November. I'm not sure how that suits within this timeline. There is a councillor briefing scheduled for two PM this Tuesday coming, the 22nd of October, on um some other uh projects. Uh, I'll have to defer to the WISIC team as to whether or not this
What?
um item can be included in that agenda, in that briefing.
Can you, can you? Can, can we do, can you do Tuesday? No, this Tuesday coming two PM onwards.
Through the chair, it's Tuesday, the 22nd of October at two PM.
I don't even know what my diary says. What's everyone, is that, can that work for people?
Can we give delegation to that briefing session?
Well, no, we'll make it, we'll call, we'll call an extraordinary meeting of the governance committee for the Tuesday, the same Tuesday.
Twenty second of October?
No, uh yes, and provide, give it the delegations to resolve the matter.
I just think the issue with, with doing that is if all councillors are available.
Yeah, I'm mindful of people, if people aren't, let us.
If, if, if they're not, and I, I'm particularly, I'm not.
Oh, you're not?
At that particular point in ti- at that time. So if it's the case that it's, everyone's amenable for an evening session, then yes, I'm content with the delegation occurring. For example, if all of us can attend and it's essentially the same thing and, and it occurs at, at five thirty or six PM.
So the only thing is we have the community drop-in session at six PM, only thing. Hmm, all right.
And does it need to be on the Tuesday?
No, it doesn't have to be, just only because people have it in there. Oh, is it? Sorry, you're right. My apologies. Yeah, Tuesday. So Tuesday, five, six PM, pick a number.
Six PM is fine.
To six PM, Tuesday, six PM, great, right? Everyone. Sorry, probably should have asked that. All right, if that's good, so second, move councillor Har, second councillor McNort. And it's got the delegation in there, it's noted. All right, to the governance committee, so it's an extraordinary meeting of the governance committee with a delegated authority to resolve the matter.
Through the chair, just would like to draw attention to the fact that the 22nd of October also has two citizenship ceremonies on during the day. So just, just wanted to flag that. It's a big day.
That's fine.
Yes, at ten AM and twelve PM.
Point of order, councillor, you're not a dummy.
So, so just, so it's really clear, so otherwise I'm getting confused. So the councillor briefing at two o'clock is for, for Khan's Hill.
No, you can do it, six PM.
No. Oh, six PM. So what's happening at two o'clock?
There's other things on it.
Oh, okay, okay.
That being said, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Three items and. Let's see, you're going to resolve them as a whole? You want to resolve, resolve the three items as a whole?
We declared an interesting one.
Where are they?
Confidential book.
Pardon me?
I just have one, one thing I want to add, one thing I want to add.
Yeah, I'm happy with that. So that's the better outcome. Go, Peter, we won't be mean.
Right, uh, so we're going to do the three at once. And that's config O one, config O two, and I imagine config O three, correct?
Councillor, oh, sorry. Deputy Mayor, I wonder if I have, could um add just one point to conf O two. If everybody's in agreement, um that, let me just check, that is the correct one, yes. That um we get um information brought back uh to council at the next meeting, if that's possible. Um, on council, um, how am I going to say this? Council um completing their portion of the street at that lot, their part road portion and the embellishment of DP eleven as a park up, uh to the standard of a, of a small pocket park. Um, so information we brought back on the cost and the timeline of doing that. And the reason that I say that is because we know what um challenges exist in Austral. And I think that it would be great if council could be uh the leader, lead by example out there and get their bits and pieces done as quickly as possible. Um, so I'd just like a report brought back on that if we could. Um, so I'd just like a report brought back on that if we could. Is that okay? I'm happy to move that they're all, okay.
Everybody happy with that? CEO, not a problem. Move them as a whole? With the addition of this to config O two. Everybody's happy with that? Need to vote? Everybody's happy, that means it's unanimous. Thank you. Done. And on that note, I'm allowed to close the meeting, so we shall see you when we need you. Thank you.